The manager, the mayor will not be attending today's meeting. So I'm the mayor pro temp, I will be addressing today's meeting. Notice is hereby given that the governing body of the above name authority will be attending a regular meeting to be held on Wednesday, the 13th day of February 2019 at 6:00 PM at Asherton City Hall, building located on 1001 Carter Street in Asherton, Texas. At which time the following subjects will be discussed to with. One, call to order. Item number two, roll call. Norma?
Chairman.
Mayor? Maxine?
Maxine.
And Commissioner Addix, Bustamante? Chris. The next item, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great liberty for which it stands, all nation, from the God, with his will, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public comments?
No.
No? No comments? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Number five, consideration and possible action to approve delaying administration service contract with MRGDC for 2019-2020 TXCDBG cycle with stipulation that it will be negotiated when if and if TDD funds application.
Yes, sir. This was one of the options we had to go ahead and make sure that we comply with TDA's requirements, that an administrator or an engineer is awarded selected for working on a project. Because if they weren't, then they wouldn't be able to work when actually the grant is awarded. So this is an option to go ahead and be able to go ahead and do that. So this is for the administration side, so that we will be covered in that from that aspect.
Any questions?
No, but we do have the grant.
Well, not yet. We are in the allocation.
Are we in the running or are we?
Yes, no, we are, we are in the running because it's an allocation that sits like three.
But does that mean there's other cities there?
Oh, no, they are, they are.
And how do we know we're going to be the ones?
The monies are divided, and this is the portion that's selected for the city.
Okay, so this is just required paperwork that needs to be done.
So you're just delaying it as a paperwork day?
Yes, because once, until we find out the actual construction cost, that's when we can go ahead and set up the engineering administration, because there's a percentage you can charge based off the construction cost. So we don't have an exact amount, it's kind of hard to go ahead and. We could have, there is an option where you can have a contract done with, let's say a big amount, but an amount that's not concrete yet, and then come back and renegotiate whenever we find out what the amount is. But this is also an option that we can go and delay to when we get the true numbers.
And by when are you supposed to get those true numbers?
Before we submit them, we said, which is in March 13th, so we have to advertise at least five days prior to submitting. So it'll be probably by mid-March, beginning of March.
Okay. Next item?
No.
Next?
I love that we go ahead and delay the administrative service contract with MRGDC for 2019-2020 TXCDG cycle.
Second.
Mr. Norma Garcia approves. Mr. Bustamante second, everybody, favor say aye.
Aye. Next item, number six, consideration and appropriate action to approve delaying engineering service contract with Amistad Consulting Services for 2019-2020 TXCDBG cycle with stipulation that it will be negotiated when in and if TDA funds application.
And that falls into the same?
It's on the same, the same, based on same offices. It's the same way.
Listen.
And well, we have to follow and go with that. Okay, I saw that we delayed the services with Amistad Consulting Services. It will be negotiated with any TDA funds already.
Second.
Mr. Bustamante second, everybody, favor say aye.
Aye. Item number seven, consideration and possible action to advertise for public review of application as required at least five days prior to submission to TDA.
And that's just what you were talking to us about?
Yes, you have to put it out so the public can see what you're going to submit for the project, and they can come and look at it. There'll be a copy here at the city hall so they can review it. And that's a requirement.
So you're letting the public know how much the project is going to cost?
Well, everything, what's going to be done, the cost, and how much is going to be administration here and the construction cost. They'll look at the application, what's going to be done. And that's just, that's just the process that's.
And that's also process that has to take place around the filing. Okay. I saw that we advertised for public review of application is required at least five days prior to submission to TDA.
Second.
Mr. Bustamante second, everybody, favor say aye.
Aye. Item number eight, discussion action, removing curb on 1142 Carter Street, Joshua Garcia.
I spoke with him this week regarding that, so he's going to take care of it, because that's really not, he has our attention, but that's textile property.
So we don't have a.
So he'll get with them about it. So there's no action on this. Okay, item number nine, discussion action on contracting water and sewer project inspector. Okay, the reason I put this on the agenda was because I saw a lot of things that just didn't look right that were going on, and I had a lot of complaints from the citizens too. And if you bear with me a few minutes, I have some pictures that I took. I got a overhead picture, let's see if it works here, if not, I got some pictures I could pass around. This is what I've seen, let me start with, this is different random, I didn't go through every single thing they've been doing, but this is just some random things I saw. This leak here, this was the time when they were removing the water tower, the whole one. That's the day that the city didn't have water, no water like for eight hours. It was on a Friday afternoon, and that's when they had the water leak, and they had texted some water that it was going to be finished by 5:00 PM. It was 5:00 PM and nothing, it was the city still didn't have no water. And then they sent another message, it's going to be by 6:00 PM, it'll be fixed. And then by the time we know it's 6:00 PM, there's still no water, and there was nobody working there. So nobody, the inspector had left, I guess back home, it was already Friday, too late. The guys working on it had also left, so I guess I'm what I called, and I guess they managed to come back to fix it, even though we had a few workers, I don't know how many there were. I was there, someone was there, I guess they were frustrated, something had happened between the water people and the people bringing down the water tower and miscommunication, I don't know what happened, they busted the line. The problem was the city didn't have no water. And we even had some, we had a worker giving attitude to our city manager, and I don't think that's professional. It's not our fault that whatever happened between them happened, but it needed to get fixed. And they managed to fix it, I guess they just rigged it up, they put that rip, big rip thing just to stop the water pressure. And the town had water, but there was one resident that lived there in the corner, they didn't, since nobody was there checking them, the inspector had already left back home, they forgot to connect this little line on the left side. So that house didn't have water for three days. I told the city manager, call the inspector, let him know, the engineer, that we cannot have a citizen without water for three days. Do we provide them a motel or some kind of water tank or something, and they reimbursed us? He said, he spoke to them, to y'all, and that y'all said, y'all said we can do whatever we want, but you're not going to reimburse us for anything. We could send them to a motel, we could provide them a water tank, rent them a water tank, and you're not going to reimburse us for any expense, that you'll be here on Monday to fix it. So on Monday, they came to fix it, they didn't fix it until like 5:00 PM, I spoke to the inspector, he said he had spoken to the citizens, even took them a piece of water supposedly, for all I know, it might have been one of our own waters that we have here for our city employees. And supposedly, according to inspector, the citizens were happy, were good with it. I don't think, I'm not good with it, I wouldn't want nobody to be left without water for three days. The city, we managed to help them out somehow by providing them water in some water tank that they had, but if it wasn't for us, they would have had no complete water for three days. So that's what happened in that story. Then they fixed it, and they connected their bag, but that was three days later. I don't think that's acceptable. The next thing. This is what they're doing right now, you're putting the plastic valves. This is just a picture, you see it in real life, it's way different. It's, that's like three and a half feet deep, even a tall guy cannot stick their hand in there and close it, you need a special tool. We don't have a special tool, they brought us some kind of tool that we can use, but since it's not the exact tool that you're supposed to use, you gotta grab it from one ear on the plastic. If it ever breaks, we're not going to be able to use it. It's going to be all this, all this is going to be done for nothing. But that one's clear, you see how that one's clear, look, I'm going to show you two other ones that I saw. Look at how that looks. What do you think that is? That's exactly what you saw right now, but that one's covered. It was not done right, this cover was rotten dirt, you could barely even see the little tip of the plastic, the plastic valve. It's bad enough, we don't have the appropriate tool to open it. And now if this cover was rotten dirt, how are you going to open the valve, the plastic valve? And then I saw another one, I think the other one's even worse than. This one is there besides Mannerie's House by the best of you. The other one's over there by Pablo Rahed's House in the corner. This is the other one. I think the sun was kind of, you can't even see it, it's also covered with dirt. I'm not, I don't specialize in this kind of work, but what I see just doesn't look right. That's why I have put on the agenda that we need to, we're not satisfied right now with the inspector that we have, we feel like, like you're taking advantage of us, just because we're a small community, doesn't mean that you could just send us someone with no experience, someone to come and experiment with us, do mistakes over here, where we have to go up on the water rates for the citizens, the elderly are on a set income, they could barely afford to make the water payment. This is for the future, the next generation, the future of Asherton. We're going to be stuck with this payment for 40 years. If this job is not done right, we're going to be stuck paying the payment plus fixing all this. Right now, I'm going to get to some pictures where we have some busted valves, and again, this was this past Friday. And these pictures were taken on Friday, this too. They had been done not even two weeks ago, they, you know those shadow valves that I'm showing you right now? They were installing them, it hasn't even been two weeks that they weren't installed. They started leaking on Friday. We brought it, the workers brought it up to some, the managers, some more attention on Friday morning, that they were leaking. Someone called the inspector to look at it. Inspector didn't show up until after lunch to come and look at it. And then the water people, yes, they had gone home early, I don't know what was going on, so they said that they were not going to fix water leaks on Friday or weekends, they were going to wait until Monday. So on Sunday night, started getting calls from citizens, they were, maybe we have some citizens here, they were taking video. All the valves just popped out completely, the water was just gushing, for hours and hours, just gushing out. And we caught someone, someone said one of our employees to go and look at it, someone he got back to me, he said it was a leak, he didn't say how bad of a leak it was, I found out later that it was, it was a very bad leak. This is, this is nothing, this was on Friday. Once again, the inspector didn't show up until after lunch, someone also showed up late to work that day until around 9:30 in the morning. The water people, to make it worse, they were supposed to fix it on Monday, first thing Monday, didn't show up until 5:00 PM to start working on this leak, to fix it. And then the inspector, he comes after lunch, and he goes and closes the valves from that neighborhood, so that neighborhood didn't have water for four hours, five hours. As far as I know, he's not supposed, he's not allowed to be turning off the water, the shadow valves. Or is it supposed to be the contractors or the city employees? But what I'm trying to get to is, if this happened, if this was done like two weeks ago, and look at what's happening, imagine in one year when they leave. If this happened in two weeks, imagine in one year, are we going to be stuck fixing all this? Just because it wasn't done right? This one here, this is in front of the water towers, over here, the new water tower. It's a, if you could look closely, it's a broken curb. So we have our constable, he was passing by, he happened to be passing by that day, they were bringing out a big trailer that they had parked inside the, beside the new water tower when they were doing the repairs. And I guess the trailer couldn't get out, so he had, he went straight, he went straight into the yard and got out to the corner and to the projects. But when he did that, he broke the curb, right in front of the constable, he saw it was so nice. He was not on duty that day, but he was, he happened to be there, and he saw the inspector, once again, he was there, and he told him, hey, look, they barely broke the curb. He said, you know what he does, he just goes and fixes the curb back up with his hands and just left it there. It's still like that today, broken curb. These pipes, I don't know if they belong to those water contractors, or what's going on there, but they're over here by, in front of Sandiva, over here in the street going down, Sandiva. I don't know if they're planning on doing a water line or something, those pipes are just there by themselves, water lines. I have no idea, but they're just there, I don't know how long they've been there, I noticed that. That's also there in that same place, and you can tell in the middle, those are the... That middle thing, that's what we were talking in the beginning, the shadow valves that they're putting underground, that one's sticking up like this much over the ground. According to the inspector, they're just going to cover it around with dirt, they're supposed to be round them. If you cover it around with dirt, it's going to be a pretty big hill, when a car passes over, you're still going to hit that middle thing, you're going to mess up your tires. I don't know if you're up to see that orange thing in the middle, it's like this much above ground. And that's not the only one, I've already seen a lot on top. That one's also there in that same place over there, I guess, at one time, maybe they were going to do a shadow out there, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't understand how they're working, because it seems to me like they start something right here, leave it unfinished, go over there, leave it unfinished, move over there, leave it unfinished, and you're just leaving a, to me, it's just a mess all over the place. They're not fully completing the project, skipping, skipping, skipping all over the This is another one I saw, that's over here by almost where Ms. Garcia lives, it's also sticking this much above ground. What do you think about this, mister?
Whenever you're ready for me to talk, I'm going to address everything.
Okay, okay, well, you can address one by one if you want, so you won't, it's a lot of different pictures. What do you think about this one, that much above ground?
There's two things to remember, the project is still under construction, we haven't done a final punch list yet, where we go through and write down all the defects of construction, the contractors to fix. Many times, these valves have a little concrete pad around them that's poured at the end of the job, that's six inches deep. That may be one of the reasons why it's sticking up six inches high at this point. And the project is still under construction, it's not complete. We have a contractor working in progress, and we're fixing things as we see them, and if the city would tell us these concerns during the day, instead of at a city council meeting, we would fix them during the day when we're here.
Well, according, this construction is supposed to, we shouldn't have to be getting to you about this concern, the inspector's supposed to be, he on top of all this, he's not supposed to be letting, allow them to do stuff like this?
Well, this is.
We can't wait until the end of the project to go back and look at all the defects, to fix up the defects?
Yeah, we did, yes, yes, that's the way.
No, I know you did.
The way it's done, at the, when the project is complete, we do the final inspections, the contract, the inspector asks the contractor to fix things that are dangerous, or in the way, or are constructed wrong during, during the construction time. This is just the way a construction project works. And I am happy to come down and sit with you, and any members of the city council, at any time during, during a meeting, and get this straightened out. But the construction project is still in progress, we don't do punch lists till at the end of the job.
And then what happened was, your assistant had told me that the water pumps were going to be finished by the end of January, right in the middle of February, and they still need like, they're not going to finish by February, right now they're way behind. And one time, he told me that they had stopped working because of the government shutdown, but as far as I know, they've never stopped getting paid. He told me that they had the right to go and work somewhere else, because they were not getting paid by us because of the government shutdown. But according to our records, we never, have we ever refused a payment on them?
No, the payments were.
We always made the payments.
Were done almost timely, they were about a couple of weeks late, but we, but they were done, exactly, they were done, and it didn't, it didn't delay anybody, it was within a reasonable time period, and everybody worked really hard, including my firm and USDA, to make sure the contractor's payment requests got processed and submitted. And we submitted them during the government shutdown, and the first thing USA did when they came back to work is process those payment requests, so we could pay our contractors. And they did that over and above any of my expectations, because they jumped on it. So, right now, but, you know, the contractor, this was a six-month contract period, the contractor has not requested any days yet for rain delays, which we had wet rain periods during October, and he's kept working through it. The government shutdown scared a lot of the contractors, because they felt that it wasn't going to open, and they would not get paid, therefore, they wanted to put their efforts on projects that they know they will get paid on, and that is probably a good reason to grant a couple of extra weeks of delay.
But the way, I'm new to all this, but I mean, I can fast learn, and I do my research. The grant that we got is 60% grant and 40% loan?
No, it's more than that.
Oh, I, I don't know.
It's almost 50/50.
Okay, okay, you're close to that. But the way you want to get paid, you first start getting paid from the loan, once the loan fits, the loan, we already have the loan in our account, you're getting paid by the loan. Once we run out of the loan money, that's when the grant money kicks in. So right now, there was no reason for y'all to be scared and going to work somewhere else, that's not the.
No, no, it wasn't because of that, it was just because of not getting paid for a long period of time, and not knowing when the government would start working. That was the only reason for delay. And the contractors didn't walk off the job, they, they kept people working, maybe they reduced staff a little bit, because they didn't want to, want to get over, what's the right word, they didn't want to get over finance in case they didn't get paid for 30, 60, 90 days, they wanted to do what they could afford in-house, so they may have cut back some staff so that they wouldn't get, get overextended with their finance, but everybody kept working, and everybody maintained the job, and all the jobs are getting real close to being finished.
But right now, from what we see in our point of view, where we see the inspector not, not, keep not being on top of things, letting them do jobs that are done?
Well, I have, I have never received a complaint from the city until right now. So if you guys want to complain to me, please, let me come and sit down with you.
I mean, if it's.
We are very accommodating, and we will bend over backwards to make sure you're happy, absolutely.
No, that's the reason I put it on the agenda, because I took the benefit of the doubt, the city manager and the mayor were doing their, their job, they're here every single day, I have citizens, I'm going to show you pictures right now, where they were coming up to them, month after month, this is going on, look at this, look at that, and they were not doing anything about it. And I, once I started looking at all this, I was like, man, if I don't put it on the agenda, nothing's ever going to be done, they're just going to just pretend nothing's wrong, that everything's done.
Can I address some of your other?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the first concern was the water tank demo. As you know, the water tank was constructed in the 1940s, and it had a riser pipe that went up to the middle of the water tank, your oldest pipe in town. And I was concerned that that pipe was still hot, that it still had water pressure in it. So I mentioned it to Ian, who mentioned it to the contractor, and be careful when you cut this. Well, Ian was looking at another job when the contractor started cutting that pipe, and he wasn't careful. And he pulled it up, and it leaked, and he pulled it up, and it broke off the service tap to the house next door, across the street, which, which we didn't know and didn't find till, or didn't realize that it was cut off. So, so the contractor who demos the tank is not a water pipe fixer, he is a demo contractor, he destroys things and pulls it out of the ground, he doesn't know how to fix it. So we called our contractor, J and K, who is a water pipeline contractor, and begged them to please come fix this water leak. It's not your job, it's not your responsibility, but if you know how to fix it, we will give you a change order for fixing this on a Friday afternoon.
But what happened when they were here fixing it before 5:00, and then they got frustrated and they left, they took off? It's a forget calling, we're not going to fix it.
They all came back.
We have to call, if you're coming back?
Bob, can I, can I speak? Sure. We didn't leave nowhere, Alex. The demolition contractor broke the pipe, this man and another man, it was a two-man crew here, they put a valve on the end of that. We brought water pressure back up, and it blew the pipe off, because he had damaged everything that would have sustained it, okay? Then I had another crew down in Catarina, okay?
After they did this, they took off?
No, it did not take off. I don't know where you get.
Nobody was there.
I was there. Did you take off?
We stayed, we stayed there until we got done with.
They stayed there until 9:00, and I had another crew come in, and then that's when we dug up out in the alleyway, and we found something, it's rotten, I've got pieces of it right here, what I'm tying onto, we'll talk about the leaks here in a minute. We put the valve on there, we got finished about 9:00 at night, that night. We stayed here until you did have water.
But not the resident?
It's not I, it's not my responsibility to take care of that. He called me, I said, okay, I'll tend to it for you.
Well, what are you, you're the supervisor?
I'm the general contractor, I'm the owner, J and K.
So do they have a supervisor that's here when they're working?
He's instilled as a supervisor while, while they are out here.
Because I've never seen you here before, this is the first time I ever see you.
You're not out there when I'm doing the tie-ins, I'm here, I'm here periodically, I would hear Monday.
I'm always riding around, I see them working, I've seen them before, but I've never seen you.
I'm here, I'm here at the tie-ins. What takes place, and then we'll come back, what takes place is, I have a two-man crew down there trying to uncover the pipes, so that we can bring in another crew, and we'll have two to three different crews working to install the pipes, so the customers are not out of water all day.
That's what we want.
I cannot, I cannot tell you how difficult it is to find the pipes without breaking them. I think we've done a good job of it. Do I make mistakes? Absolutely. I'm the first to admit it, I am the one that causes y'all to be out of water. Do I do it on purpose? Not even close.
Have you ever had any problems anywhere else?
Here, here, here's your pipe right here.
The one over there at the sewer, at the, by the water tower?
This is set, no, this is not, this is the one that you're talking about, a big leak that we left on Friday, 7th and Forest Street. You know what? This right here was tied into my valve, my valve didn't leak, my pipe that I put in didn't leak.
So why did the valve pop out then?
The valve didn't pop out.
Over here by?
The valve did not pop out. If you're talking about the little black canister that comes out of the top, whenever the ground is saturated, it leans over. That has nothing to do with the valve, other than for this man and his water department to be able to run. Other than for this man and his water department to be able to run a rod down in there and get on a square nut and close it. This is what I'm dealing with. I've got more in my truck. I got more down there at Plant One for you. This is rotten. You know what? I can't help it. I've got pictures. I told him, I said, you uncover that thing when I got down there. Because they had an emergency Monday that I had to take care of when we were packed. That's why they were down there late.
They were late, yes.
Yeah, they were down there late. They stepped at nine o'clock and got it going.
The water was just pouring since Friday, it was pouring, pouring?
No, it wasn't pouring. I got pictures of it. It was not pouring.
Because by the time you got there?
Tell me how many gallons you used in a day?
He had already shut it down.
How many gallons you used in a day?
Someone, I wouldn't know those numbers.
This is nonsense. This is nonsense. I didn't happen to stay, I could have told him, hey, that's not my job, that's not my responsibility. But I stepped up. But here's what you need to realize. No good deed goes unpunished. And now you're punishing me, publicly punishing me, uncalled for. And you're saying, you're saying, I leave this open over here, I leave this over here? Look, if you don't understand how we got, we started because your main source is elevated water tower over. We had to cut that thing off so we get in here and put our valves in it. And if you pay attention, we've been working this way, this way, this way, this way. Now, when we get ready to shut the water off, everybody on the west side of eighty-three.
Yes, I have, yes, yes, you need to do.
I'm sorry.
You're getting out of.
Everybody on the west side of eighty-three is still in water. When they had this, this leak right here, they fixed Monday? When they did that?
No wonder your, your workers have added to it, now I know where they get the.
Well, you're accusing, you're accusing me without knowing.
You don't need to be shocked.
What, what we're seeing is you already worked on those valves not even two weeks ago and they're already leaking.
What am I supposed to do?
Let me finish.
What am I supposed to do? Here it is, it's cracked, it's broke.
Well, Alex, what, what we're doing is we're taking a brand-new valve and putting it on a pipe that's forty years old to make a section. And so that if there's a water leak, we can sectionalize a small area of town instead of turning off the whole town, okay? And so, these clamping, these, these pipes are over forty years old. They only have a fifty-year design life, okay? And sometimes they can last a hundred years, but they're old, they're getting brittle. They do not even meet fire code for the new criteria, okay? But they are the pipes that this city has. These are the first PVC pipes made in the United States in the night, early nineteen eighties. So, they are thin-walled and when you clamp down a valve and you, and they were not installed with bedding. They were just installed with the existing soil and rocks. So they have rocks against them and, and, and substandard material holding them up. So when you excavate it and, and then a rock hits it or something, these are old pipes. They are susceptible to cracking. So, so when you take away all the support around the pipe, they can easily crack. And that's what we're finding. And our contractor is fixing these old pipes at no additional charge from the city. He's just calling a valve on old pipe and getting paid for that. And he's not really getting paid for an old pipe cracking that's next to the valve or ten feet away from the valve. And wherever a pipe cracks, it wants, the water wants to flow through the newest uncompacted soil. So it will flow up to where the new valve is and flow out right at that area. So that's why you're seeing, that's why you're seeing the water leaks at the new valves, even if it's not the valve's fault, it's the old pipe.
On the other side, this is the east side of it. On the other side of that thing, about four and a half feet away, is a six-inch blue tube.
We had here that we just talked?
My blue pipe is on the other side of that and I tied it onto it.
It's gonna be, you know, changed out and replaced?
There it is, there it is, finished at night, Monday night.
But I thought that that was including the piping too?
No, no, it's, it's.
Because I, I did ask that question.
I replaced it with blue.
I don't remember.
I replaced it with blue, then we put it back in there and guess what? Then it had another hairline crank in it.
We can't hear.
Then we had to get a full set of plumbing city.
Because we can't hear.
Now, I don't know how, I don't know how you expect that to be my responsibility or my concern or my fault. If I give you, if I give you, if, if I give you this phone right here and you drop it and break it, okay? How is that my fault? It's not.
That's why I say, we don't, I don't specialize in your kind of job. That's why we wanted to get an inspector that's gonna come and check your job before you operate. Because right now, they, he's telling us they're already aware that the pipes are weak and cracked and all this. And they still go ahead and finish and they cover the hole?
Well, remember this, because, just like you stated, it, it didn't leak for two weeks. It didn't leak for two weeks. It was when we covered the hole it was doing.
Well, that's what we were afraid of, that if, uh, did you say you're gonna fix it or patch them and yet you still didn't install that shut-off valve on there? In three, four months? We don't know, maybe it's gonna pop again, maybe it's gonna help.
You're exactly right. And it could, at twenty feet away from where I installed this valve, the same pipe could pop down there.
So that means that what you're, instead of making the town better, you're gonna make it worse? Because now you're tapping into all these old pipes, they're gonna start breaking by themselves since we already messed with this old pipes? And we're gonna end up with a big mess?
Sure, that's one way you could look at it.
That's a best strategy. Right now, what you're getting, you're getting a city that has all of these sectionalizing valves in it so that when your old pipe does break, you don't have to shut off the whole town to fix the leak.
Who, who here, who here lives on this side of eighty-three? Nobody? Well, everybody was in water Monday. You know why? Because we've installed new valves. We installed new valves. Everybody over here was in water Monday when we were repairing this. And if you don't put the valves in, guess what? You're gonna have to do what you used to do before I ever got here. Shut down that valve up, your honor, shut down the, the elevated tank. Everybody's out of water until it gets fixed.
That's the reason we took this big decision and we invested all this money?
And it is. And yeah, you're gonna have little problems like this.
You're far, you're far and away better than what you were.
And please bear with us, because this, you know, I expected this. I may have not explained it to the city council, but I expected problems like this. You're dealing with forty-year-old pipes and you're putting valves on them. You're gonna have problems and you gotta be real careful.
Like, shouldn't have we, shouldn't, we have been exposed to this information before the project actually began?
Well, you know, I don't know how to answer questions that aren't asked, so.
So we don't ask you, you don't tell us?
Yeah, I do. I, if I knew, if I knew, but.
Because right now, you're making it seem like, in my opinion, now the way you're talking and he's talking, we would have been better off just, instead of putting shut-off valves, cut a valve, would have been better just replacing lines?
No, you could never afford it. You could never afford it.
If you replace the lines, are you gonna put any valves in?
It's better to replace lines than to put valves in.
No, it's not.
Now they're gonna be worried, you know, we're gonna be able to use that.
This is going to. Tammy, Tammy, has any valves over here, uh, has any lines over here broke since I put them in? October, November?
Not that I know of, only those two. We got one over here on this side, I wanna show you a picture right now. That one's been leaking since October, according to the citizens that live there. They brought it up to his attention and I guess he didn't do anything about it, but.
If, if that, is that, is that in somebody's front yard?
That, that was there when, when you all started, you all were there messing, was there and then they.
You need to be very clear, because I uncovered it with these guys by hand. And that, that, that leak was there when I uncovered the dirt. It's right there at the people on, uh.
Or is it?
Uh, 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 I call it Jackson and Eleventh.
Is that over here where?
It's right there for people, right there in front of the people's front yard at the garage? Is that the one you're talking about? When we uncovered, when we uncovered it with a shovel, it was already leaking and has been.
And I'll attest, he's fixing leaks that aren't his responsibility.
So, why, why were you all messing there, were you gonna put a shut-off valve?
I've got, I've got to, I'm supposed, the, the line is supposed to run from there down to Tenth Street. It doesn't exist. I'm supposed to put in a two-inch line from there down to Tenth Street and tie the, the line that we laid on Tenth Street. Over on, on, uh, Washington Street, the two-inch line is supposed to go all the way down to Tenth Street. It doesn't exist. It stopped, it stops a hundred feet from the intersection of Kent and Washington. I've gotta lay that line down there so that the two-inch completely loops. That's why in front of this man's garage in his house, that's why that's open. We had to find out what we're gonna tie onto it. Where the line, because I dug a day down there looking for a line that doesn't exist.
So you're saying that that water problem is not your problem, it's the city's problem?
I'm telling you that when I uncovered it.
He's gonna, he's gonna make the loop.
I've gotta make the loop, it wasn't.
It wasn't there.
The line wasn't there and was showing on the record box.
What I'm talking about is all that water that's been there for, for, since October. That has been.
His job for such to fix that?
If you say it's my job because I uncovered it and caused the water, but there was water there when I uncovered it, your city workers should know that.
I'm just telling you. We have a good working relationship with this contractor, Alex.
I'm doing, I'm doing everything.
He's really doing a lot of extra work for us.
I've uncovered, I've uncovered four other leaks within the town. Within the town. Simply because I'm there and it's moist, so I'll go ahead and have one of the guys with a shovel uncover it. Looky there, it's leaking, a service line. How much is that costing you? How often is that there? Because water doesn't always show to the top. It does not always come to the top and you don't always know that there's a leak there. Because like you said, it's three, three and a half, four foot deep. John, let me continue with it. I'll, I'll keep. Before you go on, before you go on, I'd like to apologize. I get riled up and I'm sorry, I'm being accused of something. I'm being accused of something. I've got forty years of doing this. And I will not, I will not do anything to be detrimental to you or anybody in the city because I gotta live with it. As God is my witness, I've got to live with it.
So I have a question for you, with the, the juice that we pass around. There's a, a pipe here and there's no support at the bottom, so is there?
That's a white pipe?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That's when we exposed that one before we get ready to make a tie-in.
Okay.
This was taken before we made a tie-in. I have to find the pipe and then I try to get at least six to eleven, uh, uh, locations open to where we could come in with two more crews and then we'll shut the water down and we'll cut in our valves and stuff. When I put a valve in, I put a sixteen by sixteen by four-inch concrete block underneath it and then I shim up underneath it with more stone to make it solid. I'm not required to do that because the plans and specs call for that only, if it's a ten-inch valve, we're not doing that.
Okay. That's my question, you answer it.
And there's not a pipeline in this city, other than what I'm putting in, that has bedding on it. I'm going back with stone bedding around my stuff, simply because it's gotta be supported.
Let me quickly answer the rest of your concerns on the water pipe tank demo leak. You know, that was caused by another contractor, this contractor fixed it. We just didn't know that we had a water service connection to tie into. And if we would have known it, we would have fixed it. And I could have helped, I'm available, phone calls, everybody has my number. I'm happy to, happy to help you in any way I can at any time of day or night. You know, I'm, I'm here. I'm here for you.
Bob, Bob, let me ask you a question. Does everybody know where the old rusty elevated tank is? Okay? This service line's a three-quarter line that tapped on there and it runs down the alleyway and it goes into the back of the house. How was I to know that? Did it even go through a meter? No, not that I'm aware of, unless there's a meter in the back of the house. How was I to know that?
In that picture, you can see the white line where it's taken.
That's right.
There on the side.
There, there's, there's three other lines right there next to that valve that you don't even see, that you didn't take pictures of. Three other lines.
Just something that nobody picked up or didn't know they were out and they didn't tell anybody while anybody was out?
I had no idea. And you're right, when we came back Monday, when we came back Monday, we fixed it.
And it's just something that, to know about it, we'll sure try to fix it right then.
Trust me, if I'd have known, if I'd have known that that line went to that house, we've stayed till Saturday morning getting it done for you.
Well, you, you, the inspector, Samora, you, you did make them aware that that citizen didn't have no water?
But it was Saturday morning, because I got a text message Saturday morning.
No, I was there, we was, where Samora, I asked him, I was there on the spot, nobody was there. Well, the, a few of his workers were there, not you, I've never seen you before. But, um, and that's when I told him, you already called him and told him what we're gonna do with those residents? That, that resident that didn't have water? Are we gonna provide them more?
Regardless, I didn't know and.
I didn't know.
And the contractor didn't know and we can help you. I mean, we can help you. Now, I don't know if Ian knew about it.
Yes, sir.
Or if he was called.
Sorry, Adrian called me and told me about it. I can't force J and K to work on a Saturday and Sunday.
What would you fix him saying?
The thing is, on, on, what you were, you were saying, that tap, no one, I mean, I didn't have any knowledge that the city way back then had done it that way. It wasn't supposed to be done that way, but the city did it. I mean, I had no knowledge of it until I went out there, saw myself and I said, well, I was only speculating, but the reason he has no water is because that's the only thing that makes sense.
Well, at the time when we were repairing everything, nobody had any water.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, I looked at, when we got down there, and when we got down there Monday, I looked at it and I'm thinking, well, this line goes over to the water plant somewhere, somehow.
Was it tapped off the oldest line in town, off that main line? That was the oldest one in town, nineteen forty-two, tap? I mean, who is? Who knows?
The city provided the parts. I am in the process of replacing the parts to make that special tap.
So anyway, summary, certainly want to help you, please let's communicate. If something's not done right?
Yes.
Please.
Can I ask the question that I was gonna ask you before I forget it? When he was talking, we were talking, everybody was talking, with Garza, S, or Alex? I can't remember right now, everybody was screaming, so I can't, me or.
I was the only one that screamed, I have power.
No, well, anyway, be quiet and all this and all that. Anyway, somebody said, uh, didn't you knew that you might have problem with this, like those tubes there, the black, the white ones? You said, Alex, if we wouldn't have known that we were gonna face this problem, we wouldn't let you know. Isn't that what you answered?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. My question to you is this. I don't know if you ever had surgery, major surgery, or anybody here. But I remember when my brother had open-heart surgery, the doctor came to us. Now, this is open-heart surgery. And the doctor came to us and say, uh, there's risks, they're gonna pop in. All y'all had to do is be aware. Because I don't want y'all to come later and accuse me. Why did you did this to my brother and now, look, he's dead? So I put myself in thinking these few minutes. You mentioned to Ms. Garza, okay, let me finish first and then you can, you can tell me what you have to tell me. So, when they gave you the job and you knew you were gonna do this, why didn't you came to them and say, look, this town is big so, we don't know when is the last time quite here they put the new pipes there? So if we run into any complications, we don't wanna be blamed. We'll come to you and I'll let you know. Why didn't you? Are you an inspector?
No, ma'am, I'm a registered professional engineer of forty years with a master's degree and this kind of stuff.
That's good, that's good.
So, I have about as much experience as any practicing engineer would have. But, in my defense, remember, I've gone through three city councils. Two of them prior to this, since we designed the project in two thousand fifteen, okay? And maybe I told them then. I mean, I mean, I've been through a lot, I mean, I've been coming to meetings here since two thousand nine discussing this. And this is an old pipe and I'm, you know, we've only had two instances of this where these pipe breaks. It's not that bad. In my opinion, I know it's bad to you because you're experienced the water outage, but it's not happening on everyone.
I guess that's what frustrates the people, because of the water outage, without people, you know, letting us know there's not gonna be no water, you know, just, there's.[1757.02] you know, letting us know there's not gonna be no water. You know, it's just, there's, but we gotta understand that they're, they're old pipes. But I guess we all get, we all get frustrated because, you know, we don't have water all day. You know, we're not, okay, they let us know one day before. Okay, we know to get water, but if they shut out the water that day, you know, right there and then, we don't know we're gonna have water. We are getting frustrated because of that and that's.
Whenever I break a pipe, okay, we have no recourse. We have, I'm, I'm searching for the pipe to get ready to schedule a shutdown. And I, I feel like that I have been pretty, pretty diligent about letting the inspector know several days in advance when I'm gonna be ready for a shutdown. Okay? But when I'm digging and I break a pipe, you can look at me. I take full responsibility. I have nothing to do.
One of the steps the inspector does take when you do report that there's gonna be a shutdown on this day, what is, now my question is to.
Ian?
Yes. What do you do? Who do you contact and what are your means of, of informing the community?
For just a scheduled water shut-off?
Yes.
Um, so I'm working with John every day and once we have a certain amount of holes dug up or valves or fire hydrants to install, like around ten, then we'll decide, okay, next week, we're gonna do a water shut-off. Let's give the, the public at least forty-eight hours notice that there'll be a water shut-off. And then we tell the city and they, they host it.
How is, that's.
Flyers, on the post office and at city hall and Facebook, um, through the mayor, I think.
My teammates, groceries and, um.
So those are, those are planned. Whenever there's a mistake that happens, like whenever we break a line, then we don't have time to tell the people. We just immediately have to fix it as fast as possible.
But how do you contact like the elderly and the kids half like?
So I contact the city. Who contacts? Anyone like the elderly and stuff like that.
So then it becomes the city's responsibility to contact the people that cannot.
Like the elderly home and.
Well, I don't know what kind of good job the city does.
Now, how does the city contact the elderly and the people that don't have needs?
Because there's a lot of times that me, myself, I'm a commissioner here and I don't even know there's gonna be a water shut-off.
I can't say that I can do it because I don't have a vehicle during the day, but they have my number. They can let us know. We're in the fire department, you know, just let us know that day you're shutting down the, the water because something broke. Okay, um, let us know. We can go around town and let the people know because we've done that before.
I, I understand you, you have a, um, fire hydrant hooked on to a two-inch line. It is two?
It might be a, a case in an instance or two, but those fire hydrants are being used as flush valves. Flush valves to flush your water lines because.
I have not tied a two-inch water line into a fire hydrant yet.
So there's a lot of locations.
Not only, not, not even this one, wasn't a two-inch line here going down the street?
Yeah, including that one. There's a lot of locations where one street has a two-inch water line and then the one that runs into it has a six-inch. So they'll run the pipe further just to connect to the six-inch.
We're trying to connect to the bigger line in all cases. Remember, none of your lines in this town are fire rated. They're not C nine hundred pipe. So whenever you do have a fire, you never should put a suction truck on it to pump out of that fire hydrant or you will collapse your pipes. The only pipes that are good are the new C nine hundred ones and we're not putting much of that in. Okay? And one thing that the city was cited for that we're fixing are your lack of sectionalizing valves so that you can cut off sections of your city instead of the same one and your lack of looping and dead end lines. So on these little two-inch lines that we're talking about, two-inch line is normally never used anymore in a city because your minimum size should always be six-inch line because that is the minimum size line needed for fire. Okay? But Asherton has lots and lots of two-inch lines because it is an old town and these two-inch line are dead end lines. So what we're trying to do is extend those two-inch lines to make loops so you do not have to have a flush valve or a fire hydrant to flush them out. That is DCEQ criteria. And so your complaint about the valves, the little, the little two-inch valves. So because a two-inch line is considered, in my opinion, a temporary line, it's a temporary line, the city should have a program to replace these two-inch lines with new six-inch lines that are fire rated as you get grant applications done and your grant projects. We have lots of projects that can be identified. So for the valves for these two-inch line, because I feel that they should be replaced in the relatively near future, five, ten years out, I use the inexpensive PVC valve for closing them and disconnecting them and not the more expensive bronze or brass valves because the two-inch lines, there should be a program of replacing them with a line that is fire rated. And that would be minimum size C nine hundred six-inch pipe. And that was the rationale for using the less expensive valve. Let's just make these loops and get you in compliance with TCEQ so you're not cited for a dead end line. Just make the loop. A two-inch loop is cheap, inexpensive, and it gets you out of trouble with the state. And that's why we went that direction.
So when this project is completed, my question again, I have asked this question before. You're gonna have a map layout of even the ones that were not on the original map, I guess.
Everything we're learning in this town, we are drawing down, drawing it, two-inch line and we were gonna provide the city record drawings to the best of our ability of all your pipes in town showing the exact location of all these valves. And that's part of our service.
You can take Seventh Street up past Austin. You go down the hill, it's six-inch. Okay, and then if not Montezuma, it's Milam, I think. It goes east west. Well, from, 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 from Milam going north, that's a two-inch line. So if this, if this is the road right here, if this is the road right here, I just put a six-inch valve right here. Across the street, I put a two-inch valve. Because that's what's required according to my contract. I don't like it. I don't like it. But that's what it is. And I may, it, it may tie into a six-inch line down here or it may tie into a four-inch line. I don't know. The drawings I have, they don't have any eight-inch pipe on it. I found two locations that I've had to put a, 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 special connections in there to put the fire hydrants on because they're eight-inch lines. The pipe's rotten. I'm doing everything I can and trust me, trust me. I hate having somebody out of water. I hate having somebody out of water. And I'm doing everything I can, but I'm telling you, I'm human. My guys are human. We make mistakes. If you wanna crucify me, you wanna whip me, get with it, but I am responsible for it and I take full responsibility for it. But I'm doing everything I can to alleviate this situation because, trust me, my wife has been in the shower and I've had to cut the water off at my house. She don't like that. Nobody does. And I've done my due diligence in letting my contact know to let him tell the city when we're gonna be out of water. And I, if I break a line, I've gotta shut down something to fix it. I know it is an inconvenience and trust me when I tell you, I sincerely apologize. I've moved rocks out from underneath these pipes right here by hand and it split and now I've got a leak. Guess what? You're out of water, sister. I'm just trying to get ready so I can put in a valve at the scheduled shutdown time. I don't know what else to do. I still have valves to put in. I'm still gonna inconvenience y'all and I'm telling you right now, I am sorry. It is not my plan. I would love to be able to isolate one little section, one person be out of, out of water and I can do my work, but I can't. I can't. I apologize. I don't know what else to do. And what I wanted to say earlier was, we started over here on this side and we made a move. The first move we made, we did eleven valve cut-ins. Okay? And that means everybody on the east side of those cut-ins are gonna be out of water. Everybody on the west side of those valves are in water. And then I made another jump and another jump. Now I'm on the other side of eighty-three. We put valves in on Seventh, uh, Forest, on, uh.
Gordon.
Huh?
Gordon.
Gordon? If you drive around, you can see, I, I'm inconveniencing everybody with, I got open holes and stuff. But here's the deal, I can't just shut down for one valve this day. If I find a pipe, if I break it, I gotta do that, but I'm not gonna shut down one day for this connection. I get several together, then we come in here. Our last shutdown, we were supposed to be up and running by four thirty. We beat the time by three thirty. I'm doing all I can. And I know that not everybody likes the inconvenience. Trust me. I don't like being the whipping post either. And I feel like if you have any problem whatsoever, you, if, if you can't find him, you talk to my guys. I'm not here every day. I'm not here every day, but I line them out where I want them to dig. Okay? Do they make mistake, make mistakes? Yes, they do. And when they make a mistake, when they bust a line, he gets a phone call. I get a phone call. We shut the water off. Those guys go to work. I'm sorry. I, I don't know what else to do. I'm sorry.
So can I ask you a different type of question for the future? Those two-inch lines, I know that that's a problem. What are you estimated, you know, on those pipes, how long are they gonna last before we have a major problem again?
You know, the two-inch lines, as development happens and you get people moving in, a two-inch line can only service twenty connections if they're coming from two different ways. So you gotta be aware of that. So we can, it's only legal to furnish ten houses on a dead end two-inch line and twenty houses on a looped two-inch line. So you have to be aware of that. And as you do your grant applications, you start identifying these two-inch lines for replacement as some of your new projects and you'll, you'll have that as one of your new projects. And, you know, every year you get to do an application for some type of improvement and you need to start pinpointing those. And that's why the, again, that's why the two-inch valves use the PVC valves because, because they, they're the cheapest and you're gonna replace them in five or ten years. And plus, there is a device at Walmart, not Walmart, Home Depot that they sell, that the city needs to buy, that opens and closes a ball valve. And it's real inexpensive. It's, it's less than twenty dollars and it turns the little valve on and off, the three feet.
The plastic valve?
Yeah.
Oh, so the one you brought us was in the regular then?
The one I brought you, I didn't bring it.
Oh, Ian brought it.
Well, Ian brought it.
I bought one at the hardware store with my own money just to be nice.
Okay.
But it's not the same one there or something?
Yeah, it is. Probably it is. I didn't know it.
It looks, it looks like a fork.
It has a fork in it.
Two, two prongs on the end of a rod.
Yeah.
You just grab it from one ear and twist that one ear around.
And it only goes ninety degrees.
If this is, if this is the valve handle that you showed there in the picture, it goes just like this and you turn it.
But when you turn it, is it supposed to go half?
That's right.
Yeah.
It's called a quarter turn valve.
A ninety-degree valve. It only turns that much and it turns off.
Only like slight.
Yeah.
Not, not half.
So if you know your water line is running this way and the valve handle is like this right here, the valve's closed. If the valve handle is running with the, with the water line, it's open.
I know Ian, Ian went and looked at one over here by.
On Tenth Street.
He, he turned it and I know he turned like this much.
That's right.
That's it.
That's right. It's got O-rings in there and it's designed to be watertight.
I, I don't know if I got the answer. You, you weren't specific on the time, so it's more or less within the five to ten years?
The two-year, the two-inch pipe that you probably have is probably scheduled forty pipe. So it's a little thicker pipe than this. So, so PVC pipe has been known to last, you know, eighty years, but that's, you know, it was only invented in the late seventies when they started making this stuff. And on this stuff that you have, you have glued-on joints and not the bell and spigot joints that they're making now. So this, this was the first generation of PVC pipe. I mean, it's good stuff. It's, it doesn't rust out like the cast iron did and it, it was good for the time and it's lasted you forty years and it might last another forty years, but it's brittle and you gotta be careful with it.
That's why your guys, your guys use the full circle clamps whenever they have a split in the line. Because they don't have to touch it other than to put that over there and then tighten up some bolts on the outside. I don't have that luxury. And if you look at this line right here, this line right here, that right there is a cut-in. Okay? We cut this right here. While we're cutting it, this is what happened to it. This is what happened to it. Is it your fault? Is it my fault? His fault? No. It's just what we're having to deal with. Right, wrong or indifferent.
I think the city's got a grant for roads, right?
For what?
For roads, to do a new road.
Well, it could have been used for roads, but they are gonna use it for that water line to connect the two water towers together.
Ah, okay. Because I have said in the past, anytime that you're gonna do a road, make sure you, you use the proper lines so that way you don't have a leak and then have to destroy the new road that you just built, which is common sense to me, but I don't know.
It's common sense, but the replacing the pipeline costs as much as.
The road.
The road. So it's all economics.
Yeah. It's all based on money.
So basically, like, bottom line, the blame for all this is those two-inch lines that we currently have in the city.
Two-inch, no.
The old pipe.
The old pipe.
That's the old pipe.
It's the old, and you have this, this is six-inch pipe, you know it? It's, it's, and that's why these connections are so easily broken because it's old pipe that's brittle and at the end of it.
And it's like Alex says, so we don't know too much about things like this. Only you guys would know.
Yeah.
Uh, what you're doing. The, the thing with Alex, like you mentioned a few minutes ago and we saw is, uh, at the end, when the project is done, are we still gonna see those long things sticking out from the ground?
No, they'll all be flushed with the ground and everything.
Can I, can I answer this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's called an adjustable valve box that allows the city workers to go in, pull the little lid off of it, put their, put their, what they call a valve key down in there and shut or open the valve. Okay? I leave them high as I go through. We put our dirt in there compacted, but mother nature, mother nature's gonna allow that to sink down a little bit. I come back and, and then I will adjust them down and I've got a, a two-foot by two-foot concrete pad that I'm gonna pour around them.
I have heard, yes, okay.
Now, a lot of people don't do it, but what I do is I put an X mark, an arrow mark in that concrete so the person that knows when they go to that valve, that line's going this way or it's going that way or it's going that way, as long as the concrete stays there. I have found valves that are under the asphalt out there. So you can't put them too low. I like have them a little bit high, not in the roads, but on the, on the, on the skirts of the road. I like to have them a little bit high. Mound the dirt up to them. That way, anybody can come back and find them.
Right out there, it's not a deal. They're very high.
You're exactly right. I am not finished yet.
So right now?
And where you pull, where you pull that picture up with the orange, with the orange thing and real high, that's, that's on the corner of Tenth and Jackson and Washington. Because there's a big electrical power pole right there behind it. Okay? I've gotta run a line from, from where I stopped that valve right there. I gotta run a line west up, uh, of Jackson Street to tie them to your other line. That was supposed to be there and I was already supposed to be tied onto it, but it doesn't exist. That's Washington Street. I'm not finished there. I'm gonna have to come back in there and open that all back up, run the two-inch line down there and tie onto it so that we can do what he's talking about. Loop it. And then over on, over on the next street south is, uh, it's, it's got a different name, but the plan calls it, uh, Jackson or what is it in?
Washington.
Washington. Okay? Where you were talking about that water leak in front of those people's house. Okay? I didn't cause that. I uncovered it. And when I uncovered it, I called this man right here. He came out and looked at it and he says, what'd y'all do? And I said, you can see, we've uncovered it by hand. We ain't done nothing.
And it just stayed there for many months?
That's right. Because I, I still have not run the two-inch water line down there. And quite frankly, in my opinion, that is the city's responsibility to repair that Right there where you said that valve can was real high, we looked for two days for trying to find a two-inch line. I, I followed three-quarter inch water lines out there in the middle of the street and they had leaks on them. I called, I called him. He called the city. I don't know if they fixed it or not. Don't know, don't care. I identified the problem. It's not my problem, but. It's not my problem, but it is the problem. Right over here on, on the east side of, of 83, on, not 7th, but, um, the next street up from Forest is what?
Gordon.
Gordon Street, on the left-hand side. For me to be able to find the six-inch water lines, okay? I'm going to the service, the meter, and I'm following that line out there until I find the source. Well, while I'm doing that, I uncover this line, these boys are down there with the shovels uncovering this line, and they find a leak right there on the main. Called Ian, Ian called Eloir, he comes out there and says, "Okay." I can't tell you how long it's been leaking, but I can tell you, I didn't do it.
So we are trying to find, you know, the city leaks and identify them and letting the proper people know, so.
And out of the three city leaks that you're talking about, the city workers have faced through them? And so pretty much what he's saying is that there's gonna be valve boxes too high, there's gonna be piles of dirt, there's gonna be all the orange stuff so that cars don't hit it. But in the end of the project, which is close to the end of this month, we're there gonna completely finish all that, there's gonna be no piles of dirt, all the valve boxes will be flush with the road. So they're just not finished yet, they're gonna come back when they're done with the other locations to do finishing patches.
And was there reason that I found a few shadow valves that were covered with rocks and dirt?
What's the, what's the shadow valve?
The, the...
You mean a shut-off valve?
Yeah, the shut-off valve.
Shut-off valve.
And we will, that will be on a punch list, we're gonna look in every valve that's covered with dirt.
That's not a problem.
Yeah, it'll be cleaned out.
That's what I say, I, I feel right now, we're, we're investing a lot of money, we're paying you every month, paying you, and you're not, the job day, you're gonna have to come back and fix everything, you're supposed to be doing it right the first time.
Well, it's, it's hard not to get dirt in those boxes when you're...
On the two, on the two-inch plastic valves that we're talking about, I put extra gravel and stuff around there to keep that heavy adjustable, black adjustable valve box off of the pipe. Because I've got this problem right here. I will make sure those are taken care of tomorrow.
When y'all first uncovered the two-inch pipe, who uncovered it first?
Either this crew or I had another crew down here previously.
And who did y'all report it to?
What?
The two-inch pipe.
It's on the drawings, uh, the city, the city's got the drawings also.
Everybody was aware that there was two-inch pipe in all of the town?
Yeah, 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 everybody knew that, yeah, and it's all part of your city distribution system.
So it didn't, but it didn't go as part of the grant to replace?
Well, not replace, we didn't replace any pipeline, we are only looping it and putting in sectionalizing valves. We're not replacing pipelines.
And how many higher migrants?
About 35.
35.
Tom?
Yep.
My question is, what's the price difference on that, on those valves? The ones that are being used right now versus the ones that are, let's say, higher-end?
It's, it's not, it's not much, the higher end are at least double to what being used. So what is the price of a two-inch?
It's a regular valve.
John, you know, two-inch, you know, when you buy them at the store, it's...
They're $250 difference between a PVC ball valve and a, and a ductile iron-bodied two-inch valve. $250 difference, that's my naked cost. So if I was to bring one in here and set it on the floor...
So the, a two-inch ball valve?
Yes, sir.
Is that how much it, it runs you, what, do you order these from a special supplier, the plastic ones that are being used?
Yes, sir.
And those were the bid item, those were the ones I designed because I wanted to save the $250 add because I felt those valves are gonna be temporary in the city and gonna be replaced within five to 10 years.
And I guess, I guess from what I was gathering from Alex, I just, his question was, is there enough even pressure on those two tabs of the valve, I guess, is maybe what he was getting at, is what my understanding was. His question, is there even pressure on that wrench, from that wrench, on both tabs?
Yes.
Versus just on one tab, so it does not break?
Yes.
What it is, is a fork like this right here, and it's got a rod that comes up with a T-handle on it.
Yeah, I, I, we, we, we used, through different years of the pipeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I see, but, yeah, I thought maybe it was just kind of a saddle, little saddle, uh, you type. So it does have to offset.
It's a standard, a standard...
Yeah, so it does, it does distribute the...
Yeah, and it's supposed to evenly distribute it, yes.
As long as you have the proper wrench for that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, now, those, the, the valves that are being used right now, where are those being bought, are they also from your vendor or...
Which one, which ones are we talking about?
The ones that are being used right now?
I'm using two-inch, four-inch, and six-inch.
Two-inch.
The two-inch PVC valve.
The two-inch, they've been submitted on, I can't tell you the, the brand name of them, they've, they've been submitted on, and they're a Schedule 40 PVC ball valve.
And there's 25 of them to be installed.
Okay, but do they are considered commercial grade or up to industry standards?
Absolutely.
Is there a rate on that?
Every valve that you, that you see, even if you go to Home Depot, they have to meet certain national requirements, AWWA, American Water Works Association requirements.
Okay, so if there's a word to go to Home Depot by a two-inch ball valve, get around $125, do you mean?
No, no, you asked me what the price difference was.
Yeah.
That's installation cost, installation.
Installation cost.
A ductile iron, that would be an iron-body, two-inch threaded valve, two-inch threaded ball valve, resilient wedge, my naked cost is about 260 bucks. These ball valves are not that, they're eight, nine bucks, six bucks, depending on what, where you go.
Yeah, so they're quite, not quite twice the amount then. Ah, okay. Now, is, with, what stage, what phase your, your project is in right now, is there any way of doing temporary above-ground bypasses on, on, on some of the system to minimize the downtime on?
Uh, if somebody wanted to do a change order, but that wasn't in the original contract...
So there, there was no, no setup or potential for above-ground bypasses? If, if the system is able to support, let's say at a certain phase, it was able to support a temporary above-ground bypass?
You know, the, the way we design the loops, you know, is we put a ball valve or a valve where we start, and then run the new line and put another valve where we finish. So why go to the trouble of putting it above ground?
To minimize the shutdown, not...
Well, it's still gonna be shut down with the valves, is my point, when you're putting a valve on certain finishes.
If you put an above-ground bypass, so you continue the flow of water product you're running in, in the pipeline, to minimize that...
Yeah, but we're not replacing pipe, we're putting in new extensions.
I'm talking about temporary above-ground bypasses.
I know, I, I don't see the reason for that.
To minimize, like I said, minimize, we live here, I live here, I spend...
And you're, and you're out of water for one day on a schedule, on a scheduled shutdown?
I'm, I'm even, yeah, and that's not terrible when we do get notice. And, I mean, even though my business is a very small business, it still costs, I mean, every shutdown costs, because we shut down our kitchen area because we don't have the water to do the proper, um...
All I can tell you is the more valves we get in, the further north and further east that we go with the more valves, the less people are gonna be out of water. But if you're all the way on the far northeast end of town, you're gonna be out of water. Simply because we have that many more valves we have to put in.
So, so in...
We can look at the plans, and I can show you where we're at, and show you what's ahead, if that would help.
Yeah, that, that might be, that might be helpful, and, because yes, I, I do have a lot of folks that, uh...
I'll be more than happy to show you afterwards.
Yeah, afterwards, we, it doesn't have to be tonight there, John, but let's say any other day, maybe I can contact you or whatever, hopefully, maybe just a few minutes out of your time, because I know, I know what it's like, trying to manage crews and getting your work done and, and whatnot. You can't just sit down with everybody that comes around and says, "I wanna talk to you for a few minutes." I realize that, I can appreciate that.
Okay.
But just, that was, just one question. To see, depending on what, how far you are along on doing some setting valves in place, is it feasible to run a temporary above-ground bypass to hook up to some of the existing lines already and not have the entire other path of, of town?
I guess there's, I guess there's a disconnect in understanding, because if, if I run a bypass, I've gotta have a valve somewhere to shut off here so that I can, on the pressure side of it, run a bypass around. We don't have valves to do that. We're installing those valves now, we don't have valves to do that. So there is no bypass potential. And Alex, while I'm on the floor here, I wanna personally apologize for raising my voice with you.
I think everybody appreciates that, John.
Huh?
I think everybody appreciates that, and I think everybody does, I mean, except that.
I, I, I'm sincerely apologetic, I get, I'm wrapped pretty tight.
Now, right now, we're gonna be in a, we're gonna be paying up this loan for 40 years?
Yeah, that's, that's a big concern, you know, so...
So yeah, I'm sure the job's being done right. And yeah, right now, we don't, the way we see it, the community, everybody, from what I hear and what I see myself, right now, we need the water, like yourself, the supervisor, you gotta be with them every single day, not, not just here once in a while and never even see you. You can't be leaving, just bringing different guys just to work by themselves, you gotta be supervising them every day. And we need an inspector, like Ian right now, somebody that's gonna be on top of everything. Not wait until we bring it up to your attention to do something about it.
We shouldn't bring it up to our attention, any, we have meetings every month, here at the city hall, where everybody is welcome to bring it to my attention. And so, that's why my point, we don't need to do it at a city council meeting, this is a, this is a meeting to have a staff meeting and...
I know those meetings that you're talking about, the mayor and the city manager, they always attend those meetings? Have they ever brought up any concerns?
Well, of course they have, we, we respond to them, but they didn't bring up your concerns today, you know, as being real concerns, you know? Yeah, we don't like to have water leaks, and we don't like to have the city out of water, we wanna fix it. We're doing the best we can.
Alex, two weeks ago, we did have a meeting, and I invited you to it, I thought you were gonna show up.
No, I wasn't supposed to show up, that's the, they make trouble, you know, to go and take it to the dealership.
Tom? Another question, in regards to that broken light water mine that John was, you know, willing to go and repair, yeah. Now, is there any recourse with that demo contractor?
Of course, sir.
Or does John have to pick up the tab completely, or the city or who?
Well, we'll discuss that, you know, that's the demo contractor's column, and, and he, he wasn't careful, and...
Yeah.
You know, the project's not closed out yet, and we don't know how much it costs yet for that repair, and, and, yeah, we'll get to that.
And the city's not gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
But I'm just saying also to kind of make sure that John doesn't wind up, you know, I mean, with that problem, there's not what it, the expense.
This is gonna be my last question to you, sir. I hope anyway. As you can see, our citizens here are concerned. Where is the mayor, how concerned is he? That he couldn't even come to the meeting? He knew about this, cuz he came on Facebook. So people, do we...
He's in the hospital.
Oh, he's in the hospital, and he didn't reschedule the appointment, the meeting?
No, he's in the hospital, hospital.
He's a patient, so... Okay, so, my next question, citizens of Elton, you know who to vote for next year.
Still undone, I have another question. Is there a way that, that the council, the, the office staff can communicate to the citizens a monthly report of the concerns that y'all talk about, you saying that you meet with them? And are, are the concerns that you heard here, is organized? Because I don't think, he's a worker, he's supposed to be out there, he shouldn't even be here to be reporting. I think it should be the one, the next person up higher than he, he does. So we appreciate him coming and taking the time. But we do want, we want the citizens, I'm talking to them because I'm sure everybody has all these questions, is that we would like someone to generate a summary report, a brief report, like we did so many valves, I'm still working, there was a leak, like a summary report at the end of the month that they, they can pass out to us during a city meeting, this is what was going on with your water issue this month. So we can have some kind of communication.
Yeah, but I think a little bit more oversight would be very helpful on that, and...
To prevent such as happening, to prevent escalating.
Yes.
Don't wait, pour things into a jar until it just explodes, just take it a month, five-month basis, have somebody to generate a quick summary report of the questions that y'all ask here in the building. Because I'm at work, I can't, I don't have time to come and ask questions here into the office. So I really think it goes back to the person that is out there that is inspecting, and it comes back to the city office to come in, no, but really, the mayor doesn't do the report. We need somebody to do a summary report of what is going out there in our community for the workers.
I'll work with Adrian, and we'll generate any questions that y'all have, if they're, the special side, if you'd like a formal response. I'd certainly be happy to do that.
I think a lot of that, a lot of that information is being lost through the cracks.
Yeah.
It's not being given, if, let's say, somebody, John, or, or Ian, or whoever does bring that to somebody's attention. I mean, there, there also has to be some follow-up on that, so hopefully, you know, chain of communication or the oversight can lay a little bit better.
Excuse me, sir, that on the issue that Mr. Wismata showed us on his projector, several pictures, several items, and he could send you a memo, something to that effect.
Yes, and I can explain.
Dealing with all the different pictures he showed you, and you telling us, okay, this was done, and check mark. This is gonna be worked on, check mark, you know, stuff like that, so we'll know. We just don't wanna be left out in the cold, I mean, we know the, the city needed this project, that's why we received it. And we gave everything we had to you because we trust in you, we trust in your employees, that you're gonna do an outstanding work for us and not...
We try to do more than, than what we're supposed to do.
And hopefully, and who's gonna do the final, sir? Who's gonna do the, the final walkthrough of the project?
Ian and I, and the contractor, and the city, whoever wants to come to the city, we all do it together, the final punch list.
Which we have them on the water tower and the...
Yeah, I, I wish to do that.
The scheduled, scheduled final.
So you keep, you keep on, you're, you're gonna keep on running the same way you're running right now with Ian inspecting? He says half of his job is paperwork, 50% of his time is paperwork. And you're gonna have the water manager here, not here 90% of the time? We're gonna continue going the same way we're going right now? Like from, from today and, and on?
Basically, I think Mr. Somora, he's not qualified or capable of making sure that whatever you guys are doing, you're the one, you're the experts on the subject, I would think. I mean, I wouldn't send nobody out there to check and see that you have the holes or the cement or the valves. I, I myself, I mean, I'm sorry.
That's why I put on the agenda to, right now, from what we, we're seeing, that we don't, according to y'all, it's, it's gonna be fixed when everything's finished. But we don't specialize in this, we just see it and we know, common sense, it doesn't look right. That's why I put on the agenda to contract a water and sewer project inspector to oversee, to give us more, and, more, so we could feel more...
Secure.
Secure that, that everything is being done right? Because right now, we're just going by what you say, we don't, we don't specialize in what y'all do.
You guys hire us, and we are your consultant, and we report to you. And, you know, if you can't trust us, we need to have more meetings. Because I tell you what, all I wanna do is be trustworthy, loyal, and do the best job I can, and not make any mistakes, and, and have a quality completed project. Ian too. And just so you know, Ian's background, he is a degreed engineer, he's worked for me for two summers... He's worked for me for two summers. He worked for me for the summers when we designed these projects. So he's familiar with them, and he is the most capable inspector I could find who would come to Asherton, Texas for a year and a half and live here and inspect. And he, in my opinion, is doing a great job, and what, and I am coming, anytime I need to come, I come to Asherton. And there's a problem, and you deep me, I leave Austin, and I come to Asherton, and I am a phone call away.
And was he approved by the USDA to be an inspector?
Yes. We submitted his resume, and he got approved by USDA, yes. And he is a degreed engineer.
Also, Alex, I texted you maybe a week ago, and I truly just want you to bring, you know, a certain, any single concern up to me, and then I'll tell the contractor, and we'll get that taken care of. You know, it doesn't have to be like talking behind the back, or so public. You know, if you just, and I texted you, you never replied. Call me anytime, text me.
As a concern.
And let us know, because we, you are our, you are our boss, and we know that.
These concerns, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be spared by me, they're supposed to be spared by you.
Well, they are. They are.
Not by, not by the citizens?
And they are, they are being resolved, and I hope I discuss the reasons why. And I think we had good reasons for every one of the problems, so. And this is just the water project. Remember, we have five total projects, and the hardest one's gonna be the sewer plant. And it's, it's just six months in.
And so I was an inspector for all five of these jobs that are going on right now. Two are complete, and two more will be complete within a month. And we have one left. And out of those five jobs, you only have complaints on one of them, so.
Yeah, the water, the water, the water department?
Yeah.
Because no, no one, no one knows or sees what's going on with the sewer, or the sewer treatment.
The only sewer complaint I got right now is, since you're here, I could ask you, are the old manholes they're taking out, they're coming in here at this new city yard?
Because they're metal, and you can sell them, you know, you don't get very much money. But we gave them to the city so that they can sell them.
They have salvage value that you can.
If the city doesn't want to sell them, then we'll take them.
Do you wanna sell them?
We don't have the equipment, the trade.
Do you want to sell them?
I would rather clean, I would rather clean, keep them.
Because you don't know, you're gonna make a little money for the city.
I know the price on metals is very low.
That's what I asked three times, do you wanna sell them?
I would rather clean that man, after me, it looks, it looks like we're becoming, it looks.
So if you want to sell them, that's why he's asking?
For us to sell them?
Yeah, we wanna sell them to the scrap metal.
Oh, yes, and who keeps them? For the city, or for your profit?
For the, for the city.
Be, be very clear, if, if I'm buying from you, I take full ownership from them. You're not getting any scrap money for them. I'm gonna pay you for them.
Make sure, make sure you know what says here, that you need replacements.
The reason they're in that pile over there is because they needed to be replaced.
Yeah, they're not good.
Yeah, they're no good.
They're no good.
There's scrap metal that you can.
That's an urgent item.
The city can more than, more than, capable of picking up the phone call, calling a scrap dealer, he'll come out and he'll give you a price on it. And then he'll bring back his truck and stuff and load them up.
Whenever the company for the manholes, they asked me, will the city want manholes? And, because they're worth money, and I said, of course the city would want manholes. Because if, if I didn't say that the city would want manholes, they would took them, they would sold them, made money, but why not the city make money for themselves?
And also, the big plate that was left over there, well, that was the mayor's request, to dig from the old water tower. Because now, how, moving and moving from there is very heavy.
There, there's two plates over there that belong to me, that don't belong to the city. But if you're talking about the old, old, the old.
The old water tower.
Yeah, water, yeah.
The old water tower.
I ain't figured that one out either.
Yeah, it's there, it's like.
But if you wanna move, all you gotta do is have somebody ask me, I got equipment in here, I can move them. Not that hard. But there needs to be some communication.
Contractors are willing to help you, so there's equipment, and they're, they're very cordial and very helpful.
My opinion is, the city should keep it, because that's the last thing that we have.
Those two things? No, those two. The only problem right now is that we have them over there on the side of the road, by the old water tower.
The thing is, if you keep them, what is the purpose of keeping them?
Yeah, what the thought was, is we took, we saved the metal that had the old words "Asherton" across it. And the mayor was like, this might be a nice sign to use at the city yard and paint the words "Asherton" over it, so that it has, it has historical value.
Yeah, make it flat.
Yeah, make it flat and make a city sign. And that's what's the spot when he asked the contractor to salvage it. Because they offered to save anything of historical value that we would run off that dollar.
Yeah, right now, what do you think, or something? I, I, I think I would feel more comfort if we were to at least contract somebody, at least temporarily, just to oversee the projects that are going on. I know we still have Ian as the inspector, but just to oversee, give us a report to see if things are actually being done the proper way. And once we find out if things are being done, then we could just continue going the way we were supposed to be going.
We're happy to give you a report. If you want to report with us, we're happy to meet with the city council and report.
With that emphasis, that they will report to us on a weekly basis?
Yeah, but, okay.
Someone, you also have something to say with USDA, you also have something to say about it?
I want to forward Mr. Montal, he's the one that heads the meeting.
Who's that, Jaime or someone?
Yes, yeah, I mean, he said, I mean, that's just coming from him. If, if you get an inspector, he's gonna have to be under some, some.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wanna, and we're gonna get somebody who has to be with experience, and needs to be approved by USDA, not just whoever.
And the other thing is that they're not gonna cover, the city's gonna have to cover the wages for, for not only the inspector, but the engineers, so whoever that might be, and that just works for Mr. Montal. There's still some unfair certainties about that, but the words that he shared with me when I spoke with him were exactly the ones I'm sharing with you.
Now, the city's gonna have to cover for that, for, to pay for that spec?
Well, just for the inspector and engineer.
Services.
Yes.
Because we would still have to get, like, maybe the engineer is the one that takes total control, like Mr. Thonoff here, and then the employee that he hires is gonna be reporting to him, whatever he's gonna be overlooking, doing for us. So we need two, people, employee, or two more.
I mean, because the, the inspector has, what is, where the inspector has to be on their license and engineer. I mean, it could be, I, I did have discussed that with Mr. Montal at the time, but it could also be with Mr. Thonoff, I mean, or, it's just, the word he used was under, just, that's the end of license.
So Mr. Jaime is already aware that we have some, some things that we were kind of, didn't like the way things were going? Is he aware of the little issues we were facing right now?
I mean, he knows, I mean, he knows the issues that, that, that bear among the, what, the contractors, the overall duties of, of the workers. He, he's well aware of what some, what some of the issues were having. I mean, I can't say that he's, he has all the details, just like tonight, you know, some, some of the, the details that were shared with, with Mr. Thonoff, the contractor, J and K. I mean, he's not aware of this presentation, no.
Well, we could send him a couple of minutes.
I mean, I mean, he's aware that, that the city does have, like Mr. Thonoff said, two-inch lines, and the city sure has six-inch, but they don't, I mean, it's understandable. He's aware that, that some of these lines are, I don't even know the percentage, but I, I mean, it's great, I'm gonna say a great deal of percentage of these lines are, are old, brittle. And perhaps like Mr., the contractor from J and K was saying, when you're gonna do a job, you're, you're, I mean, it's not guaranteed, there's gonna be, there's gonna be that, that break on that line because, because of how old that line is. I mean, he knows that, he's aware that our, our lines here are old, brittle. And in compliance with the best way that the city needed to work with back in, you know, I don't know, like I said, I don't know when cities hold these lines. I do know that they're very old, probably as old as when I grew up here. Some of these ones were never replaced. And it is true what they, what they're saying, I mean, the city should have at least had at least six-inch lines. Because it, what Mr. Thonoff was saying, when you have a high percentage, I mean, it's, it's, it shouldn't be connected to a two-inch line, because of, I just spoke with Mr. Rosas, and Mr. Rosas wore to connect one of those pressures, sucking device there, it's gonna cause some major problems in the city. And then you're gonna have more problems than just what he presented. And asking to leave, more likely asking to leave the city without water for who knows how many hours? For days, I don't know. I mean, so yes, I mean, he's aware of some of the things that the city is gonna need of, that he knows. Again, not all the details that were shared tonight.
Because all these things that are going on with the city, like all this water that was drained, drained out, our, our light was gonna come out higher, our, the pump got extra wear and tear, pumping out those gallons of water for all those many hours. So even though they say that it's not, they're fixing it at no cost for us, we do, we are getting a cost on the light bill, on the, the, we had barely fixed the, the motor in the, over there, and it was like ten thousand dollars, we lost it, to repair it the other time.
I understand.
And all this wear and tear, everything that it had, just because of that?
Well, the motor, that, that motor gave, gave out, because, I mean, there was no fault from anyone, I mean, it was, apparently, the, what the evaluation was, there was oil on it for weird reasons. I mean, it shouldn't have had oil in there, but the oil itself that was already saturated within the coils that, that, that motor has, it burned, it just completely burned the motor. They were very fortunate that it could be rebuilt, because if, it couldn't have been rebuilt, we're talking about, give or take, maybe about a fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar motor.
And I haven't put on the wear and tear, things like this happen. Because right now, all we see at the end of the month, where's, where, and then by, there's a lot of times that you gotta sign the check, it has to be mailed out by tomorrow to pay you all, and we don't really know what y'all did. You, I know y'all checked your work, but we don't, we don't know. They're telling us to sign here.
We have a monthly meeting with USDA, and we invite you to every single month, a meeting. But the, the mayor's been in maybe three of them, you've been in more than two of them. So we, we want you guys to be at the meeting, it's just not, not every time you can show up.
I know, the, the last time I showed up, the mayor was here, and then he was very upset that he wanted to be here, and he couldn't be here because I was here. I asked him, and he said that it was a quorum, so I was like, you know what? He's the mayor, let him be here. But then he's not voicing no concerns or anything.
So that's, that's our main, once a month, to show everyone what the problems are. And like you said, the mayor's been in it more, more times than you have.
And if you're gonna do that, and you want all of them, just put them again, and have a, have a legal. Just let that be here.
You can do that. All three of you guys can do it for, I want them up to me.
Good idea. You know, right now, for all we know, maybe we already paid for all these things that you say you're gonna come back and fix, maybe it's already been paid for, for all we know?
No, there's what's called retainage, and you pay for ninety-five percent of something, and you withhold five percent of the cost, and you don't give it to the contractor until it's one hundred percent finalized, however everyone wants it to be. So they're not getting paid their full contract price until it's completely finished. So we aren't withholding any money from them for not finishing.
And also, how do we know, how do we know, because we don't specialize in your work, that you're putting the shut-off, those shut-off, cut-off, cotto valves, where they're supposed to go? How do I know? You're like, no, you know what, don't put that one there, forget about that one, just put that one over there, that one over there. How do we know? They're, they're, they're not following.
You gotta set plans.
Yes, but how do we know those plans are being followed?
You, you went out there today and took pictures?
Yes, but.
It's all right here, I'm, I'm operating off of this right here, third page, it's the whole layout of the city.
That's even, yeah, because they called me to do a fence over here, and I wanted to use two and seven eights, and the plan calls for four inches, and you need to use four inches. So I know he's wrong, because I.
I pretty much told him he can't build anything, because it's not.
It's gotta be a four inch, follow the plan, so he told me, I know he's doing it right.
And, and just so you know, all the valves were submitted per the specification. It's a Mueller valve, and they're not cheap. And it's a special Mueller valve, C515. Look it up on the internet. It's a special valve. Mueller's been made for, I don't know, hundred and fifty years?
And besides those shut-off valves are supposed to be placed, you guys already know where, according to the map, where you're gonna be, the space, that area that it's gonna cover. In other words, we have it in this section, and I'm gonna find it here, because it's right there. Then I go to Barrios Anries, or whatever, the Americano, whatever, and there you go again. This is where that valve is, and it's right there.
Yeah, I, I, my question is, who approved the drawings? City council had to approve the drawings. Somebody, somebody had to say it's okay.
It was the previous. I'm totally responsible for them, mine seals on that. We got them approved by the TCQ, they went through the review process. They went through the USDA, the engineering department, but it's been E, TCQ, and USDA, and city. For, for I is plus seven.
Yeah, I understand the past, the previous, the previous, it was approved, but we're here, and we just gotta make sure that, that it's being done according to what is approved.
And we're.
Uh, they're to do that, that's our job. Alex, have you opened up a set of plans and looked at them?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
Okay. Anytime, anytime you catch me or my guys out there and you wanna know something, they got these guys on there. This is our bible, this in the spec book.
And that's the same stuff that was, that USDA seeds and?
That's right, right here, and, and the other four projects. There's no under-the-table type stuff, I mean, it's all above board. This man right here, he's got forty years of engineer, his name's on it. If he does something wrong, he loses his license. It's that simple.
Give them time, within time, you know, give them time, it's like. Yeah, give them time, within time, it's not, it's not gonna get fixed right away, it takes time to fix something. And then it takes time to see, you know, what's being fixed, or, you know, it takes time to.
And if there's any questions that we might have, we can give them to Ian, like any type of, just a sheet of paper with whatever issue concern we have, and anybody else from the community too. And then you report to.
Adrian's our primary contractor.
Okay, alright.
Adrian, I wanna keep it like this, I, I guess, when, if you expect for me to sign a check, I gotta see exactly what y'all did. So don't, don't, don't try to give me a check the day before, the same day, like, give me a couple of days to go and see what we're paying for.
But you have to be at the monthly meeting for all the other contractors.
Did we say, we're paying you for twenty valves that we put? Show me where the twenty valves are.
Well, they are, they're on the payment request of the contractor, it's all on there.
No, just tell me, sign the check, I wanna see exactly.
You need, you need to understand also, in the process, under contract, I can bill for materials on hand. Anytime you wanna know where your materials are that are not installed, go down to plant number one, they're there.
Because I know you, you're paying, every month, you're, you're, we're paying what y'all did for nine months, correct?
No, no. I just received a December, December payment last week. It's the middle of February. It's the middle of February.
What was the reason that happened?
Government shutdown. But I, I want you, I want you to acknowledge the fact, we never shut down here.
I know you all stopped coming for a while, or you...
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir, you are incorrect.
Showing up at five to work, that's not really...
I had an emergency on Monday morning. Your truck didn't, your truck, you had trouble with your truck, but you couldn't make it to city council? Tell me the difference.
Well, I mean, one man crew, you're not a one man...
No, it's not, it's not a one man crew. I got another man here, and we're uncovering. I don't need five people to watch one piece of equipment uncover a line, and I'm not gonna do it. And like I said again, I apologize. I will bust another pipe, I can guarantee it, because I don't know where they're at. I can, I can be six inches above where the line is, not know the line's there, and scratch a rock, and it folds the wrong way, and it busts the pipe. That's my responsibility, I can only do so much. I can't dig every hole by hand either.
So you're gonna make a motion to...
At present, yes, not to hire an outside contractor for water supply. And I think you have a stipulation, or you wanna add something to...
No, but just that, though, I wanna see what we're paying for it, though I don't wanna just be signing the check and not knowing what we pay for.
You have, you do have it in front of you, every check you sign, you have the contractor's payment request, and it shows everything that was installed that month.
With me, they only give me the, they only give me the check, that's it, they don't give me... And that's the few times they give it to me, because the mayor, I guess he gave orders not to let me sign checks, to give it to Ms. Arson. So there's only a few times that she's not able to come, so I have to sign, and that's how I know that there's a lot of times there at the last minute, you need to sign checks.
Yes, but the problem is with the sitting, Mr. Amora, he can give you anything you ask from the city, he should report it to you. Whether the mayor wants to or not, that's his responsibility. Okay, Alex, this is what we pay, this is what happened, this is what happened. He is the one to be blamed, at least I blame him. I don't know about the engineers or the workers. The workers are doing their job, he's not doing his job to report it to you. So you get upset, and you come and take it out of them. I hate to say it, but this is the way I'm seeing it. He is responsible, that's his responsibility. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a city manager. We would need a city manager. I'm sure they pay you, I'm sure it comes from that. The, the one that pays you, your boss, has to have a, a, somebody in top of him. He's not that is gonna give you the check because you're telling him it's so many hours. I'm sure he's gonna see what you, how many breath you sold, or didn't sold, or throw away, or give away. And that's his job, and he's not doing it. From day one, he's been here, he's not doing his job at all, and he's getting by with a lot of things. And if he wants to, me to prove it, I can prove it, because it's been going on for years and years and years. What do you think he got it made? What do you think he's been here all these years? Why? Just to come and pick up the check? He's not even taking care of the employees here. That's his job to go and check, he doesn't do it. So what makes you think, or me think, that he's gonna respond and give you all the information that you all have to have? This is the way I think. I could be wrong, I'm not right always, but this is the way I think, and this is the way I see things. You, you call him, oh, well, this, 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 and never say, well, you know what, Ms. Galván? I'm gonna go and check it out myself. Many times he tells me in the phone.
I have a question for Mr. Asama, the contractor at this time, Mr. Asama just added to wanting to see payment from...
They cut you off right away. They don't wanna hear it.
You're gonna see what, what we're paying for?
I don't know why they call it special meeting, if they're the only ones that wanna talk.
Item number 10. Discussion action to purchase new utility software.
She said... The request. There's like five pages there, the other part of that webinar, so she went through how the system works. The amount. She wasn't there at her office in the afternoon to discuss more clarity on the amounts, but the way I see the amount, it's just, black and white, I could, I could mention this. The total amount is, the license, the license is, is a one-time charge, if they're gonna charge when, if, if it all is implemented, sorry.
I just wanna interrupt you. I'm on a long guest. I'm sorry. Alex, I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry you had to hear this.
It's all right.
These people, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, because you guys, they gave us a overview of how it works, it works, it works really good. The only thing they didn't get to us was the price.
And this is, I mean, this is a...
Is that the cost?
Yeah, give or take, I mean...
Was it $3,200?
No, 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 no. The way I'm understanding this, you see, and again, I didn't want to give more clarity on it, but the way I'm understanding it, they're gonna charge a one-time fee for the license, if, for what the, what she covered on her webinar, the ledger, the general ledger. You know, it's gonna include that general ledger, accounts table, payroll, all that. Do you remember that webinar, it's gonna include all that? There's, there's certain costs for each item, which totals to, and that's, I'm just talking about the one-time licensing fee, it's gonna total $8,435.
That's the one-time, one-time license, one-time licensing fee.
The annual, it has to be renewed annually, so you're talking about a $2,534 annually renewal fee.
Every year.
Every, every year. Now, there's some, they call it the go-live services. Their personnel's gonna have to be trained if the system is implemented, so there is the actual cost for each item there, which totals $3,270. Now, this is an item that can, that can remain for ongoing training, any train that might be here, that's always gonna be available. Now, the city doesn't, if I understand this correctly, the city doesn't have to maintain this. They can just say, well, after a certain period of time, they can say, we're, it seems like the personnel is running the system accordingly, we don't need any more training, I think that's probably gonna be just more waste of money, we keep it. The council can, can make that decision and eliminate that $3,270. The way I'm understanding it, that, that is an extra, that's an extra cost, that's gonna have to go along with the $8,430, plus the $2,534 for that, for, for the renewal, which I believe it's also gonna be added to this, this one-time cost. I need, I need, I need to clarify that with her. It could be, or it may just be, it may just be an amount for next year, but...
Not having so many different programs, she said they had up to 30 different programs.
And I guess they cut it down only to the ones that we need right now.
The ones in the box for $3,270.
But the $3,270, I mean, it, it, that's not something, I mean, that, what I'm understanding from this is just training, training services to implement the system. And then later on, the city feels that, that it's up and running accordingly smoothly, then they can eliminate these, they can eliminate these costs. Or if not, just keep, maybe keep a certain...
Some of them.
Some of them instead of all of them. But what I'm understanding is that that cost is gonna be added to... I also spoke about credit card payment. They have a PayPal, if I understand this correctly, and that also, if the city is in need of that, it's gonna cost a one-time fee of $2.95 licensing fee, and then that's just gonna be an annual fee of $89. And then there was also a discussion of website. Now, we don't have a website, but they said, if I understood the webinar correctly, they said that they, we could connect the website with them, and they could work, work accordingly, whatever, whatever that website would entail. And what I see from this webinar meeting is, it's, that's gonna be a $14.95 per month charge, where they one-time set up a $450, and you add it to, to the, those other two figures, the $8,435 and the $3,270. So, just to set this system up, if this is what y'all decide to implement or include, we're looking at at least maybe about $4,000, some odd, $14,000 and some odd dollars, just to get it going.
And then annually?
Annually, we're looking about maybe, depending on the services that the city has to keep, maybe anywhere from $2,500...
The maintenance support only is $2,534, but you still have to pay all the other services? Like the, like the web, the...
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, not, not other website, no, not other website.
It was a very good system, just the price. The price, pretty pricey.
Sign up for your water bill?
It was, like with this system, right now they use QuickBooks, no, there was no longer need to use QuickBooks, and if they ever need help, they just press, there's a help line, and you just press it, they help you, or they, you could call them by phone or by computer. It tracks grants and projects for the past 10 years, you, you'll find out everything that, what you spent, what you did, it...
It's very detailed.
Yeah.
Very, very good for a city, because it takes care of billing, todo, it gives it to you, the whole, just like the, I guess if you were an accountant and you opened up a book, and you saw all those numbers, that they all have a place, and they all go in a particular place.
They have your budget set up, if you start going like past your budget, it gives you an alert that you're already passing your budget.
Thank you so much. It's very...
They help solitaires.
I think it's great, I mean, but for us...
It does the payroll also, it does the, if they use vacation days, sick days.
It tracks them up?
It shifts everything, the...
Your water, your, your water usage, your water loss, all that?
That's what she said.
The, the citizen, like you, if you have three different accounts, and you wanna pay online, you go online, and it'll pop you all there in three accounts. You could click whatever account you want, it'll tell you the details, how much you gotta use, everything.
Well, now everything's gonna be technology, see?
Yeah, I know, but it's also very pricey.
And it...
Yeah, but at the end of the day, your staff...
It pays off.
It has the, the POs, whenever you go and purchase something, you come and you scan the receipt, it's in your record. You don't have to be looking through...
Everything's there, it's all there.
You hop out, and you could go detail, like I wanna see what they bought at Alamo Lumber, you hop out Alamo Lumber, show up.
And buy it, I mean, like listen to someone when they...
And then you click at the receipt, it'll show you the receipt, and it'll go up for many years. It also has the feature, like if there's ever an emergency, and our guys, it was the week to read meters, and the guys, they were all sick in the hospital or something, it has a feature where the computer is gonna automatically, it goes, it runs off their, their payment for the past years or whatever, and it's gonna send them an average. And then the following months, when they do read it, it will adjust it to if you overpaid or underpaid, but it's gonna give you the average, you're gonna pay the, what you usually pay. It will automatically average the, the payment.
Does that have some motions to table the item at this time? Second? Mr. Asama, the second, there's any parents say I have time, motion please.
Item number 11, update of U-Lot for the month of January 2019.
Got some action on that one?
Item number 12, discussion of Fulo City Managers Reports.
We've got a few items, and again, it's every month, this review, monthly, it would be a contractual engineering and returning payment arrangement. I don't have any returning payments yet, but mostly it's been contractual and engineering, but that's like what the panel says, every month, which ultimately part that need from now on. Also begin work on the annual Texas Water Development Board Water Heat Survey, it's due by March 1st, so I need to complete that. I, I started the work, I just need to complete it. The tire collection, it was a success, I think it was a success. The next tire collection, which might be the last, is scheduled to begin on March 5th, and then run its course, this one lasted, I think, two and a half, two and a half weeks, so it was not bad. Auditor, I also assisted auditor with some financial records and information regarding our coming audit, and I believe the auditor is ready to present his audit next week, so we need to schedule a special meeting for Wednesday, he said Wednesday will work, so, for your information. There's a, the city of Eagle Pass offered an invitation for their fourth annual South Texas Water, WIS Water Regional Conference, which is free, the mayor and I attended it last year, it's free of charge, there's, there's no charge for anything unless you, you spend the night there, but Eagle Pass is very... But Eagle Pass is very near Ashington. So, they invited us, if we're willing to attend again, to their, like I said, their fourth annual South Texas Water and Waste Water Conference. And that begins February 26th and ends the 27th. And the last thing I have is the colors. Here are the colors for the sewer plant. My thing, colors I would suggest for that building were ash gray, brick red for the trim, and white, color white for the roof. Mr. Tana needs those colors. Hopefully tonight.
Yeah, first when I, when I, when they were talking about colors for the plant, I was thinking it was gonna be like a big plant, then to find out is it gonna be like the size of this room?
Yeah. We just have one metal building there, and it's gonna be a metal building. And we were, I was gonna recommend trying to match similar colors to this building, which has the gray, the gray side, a white, a white roof for energy efficiency. And then the trim around the windows and the roof and the gutters would be a brick red. It's not maroon, they don't have maroon as an option, but a brick red is very close. So, that was my suggestion for the city.
Yes, good. We didn't have that many options, even those colors?
There was, there was ten options, yeah.
The options were ranging, not yet at all. Those were like the.
Some were to this building and in colors.
I was gonna ask you, like two months ago, you told us that you had put somebody in charge to put the picture frames here, have all the.
I found it, I mean, it was just, it wasn't a one-day thing of trying to find a picture, there's somewhere, but there's boxes, I was just selfish, just found it there. It was obvious, I assisted with that, and she finally needed to locate it. So, I have the pictures, and now, because now I'm just gonna compare, I think there's a total of 16. So, I need to get 16 frames for them.
And I saw, because when I, I know last meeting we got approached to, to cut some grass with the shredder. But then you brought it up that it was the kabura, that it was broken.
It's the big cutting grass, the big cutting grass, yeah, the big cutting, the big cutting grass.
Was it kabura?
The kabura, Mr. Galen, Mr. Royal, you know, we're using kabura today.
Okay, well, we can remember that. Spoken about the alleys over there.
We started using kabura after that. Again, and also busy with these issues that.
What the other, the other two guys?
The other, the other one, one of them, he used to start using zero turn. He went out there and cut some grass at the park, see, Plaza B, it was zero turn.
In the park, I noticed that they're not cutting, like in the, in the, they use to cut it out for some reason, they're not, they're in the, in the, where, in the, where the water goes. There's no water, though.
Well, but it brought to my attention that the leaders, leaders we had were not working.
I thought they were going with the tractor in there. Before, when they were doing it. And the weed whacker didn't work?
Um, they tried.
That should work.
Weed whacker, but I guess it just, it was an inconvenience in short term. But they, they, well, they got the job done with the, with the leaders, but.
Oh, they did it already? I was just worried, it's gonna be playing the bubbles down there, and when they go and get it, could be a snake or something, they don't even see it.
I mean, they'll have more, there's no work to do.
And they got the weed eater going also? I know at the Placita they had, they forgot to weed eat because supposedly the weed eaters were broken.
Well, I have to get two, two new weed eaters, because the other weed eaters were not fixed yet. The mechanic that comes, comes and does repairs on our vehicles, he says he also does work on weed eaters, and I know one time he did, and he fixed two, actually two other same weed eaters we had. And this time I only said carburetors are shot, I mean, it's, it's, they were not repairable. So, for now, I said, for now, I just purchased two weed eaters, re-pairs for now. And I'm looking at probably March is coming, and that's the time when they're gonna, grass gets set. So, I'm kinda planning on purchasing two weed eaters by the end of month of March. And it's just designing weed eater tubes.
I know, I never feel for employee waiting at the same time.
No, I know, it's rare, but.
If you had an opportunity, you'd kind of know.
And also one last thing, how was, how's everything going on moving the stuff from those city yards to the new city yard?
It's a little bit slow, I mean, I spoke with Mr. Salado, just to ask if you were healthy, what I think, the other members though, and I, some of the members already know that we need to move off by the end of this month. So, I told him, whatever you can move, little by little, whenever there's a bit of time to do that, we, there's probably gonna have to be one day where they're gonna have to drop everything and just get it done, so, I mean, they know to, they know to at least do that, so that when that day comes, it won't, it won't be that hard for. Kinda hard to do that, because there's still, there's still problems out there with water, sewer, and then just the regular cutting grass here and there. But.
Someone has their stuff still coming, is that really?
And the party in the storage room decided?
Cause that's another thing that you might wanna have to get rid of stuff and whatever was there.
I think that there is some quiet in here.
Well, we have like, a lot of supplies, and then we have holidays and other stuff. It's not funny anymore, cause they. But there was a lot of stuff there, I don't think they could.
What about in the old city, how's there stuff in there too?
Uh, the old desk, and I don't think there's.
Well, I think someone should make a, a walk to go, and then come on to see what's salvageable and what's not, and get rid of everything. Maybe put it outside, somebody can pick it up if they, they want.
And I know I saw the light company today putting, I think they're putting the poles to connect the light, the meter. And Freddie, he's gonna pull the light and the light for you. I second. Item number 13, discussion approval of fire department report.
Last month, I couldn't make it to the meeting, my wife was in San Antonio, seven thirty on our eye. And I wanted to make it this, this month either, because I had my wife in the hospital again, not yet. She has, she was pretty sick and she's gonna have open heart surgery in a couple weeks. One type valve or something. I'd like to thank all the people that run a fair. And right now, I'm gonna pick up the dialysis, retire from the office now. From now on. This month, we only had three EMS calls during checkup. And we had one accident, was for the main 18, 18 liter that was right in front of a a little, that had a jack knife. So, that's the only ones we had. Uh, had the two burn permits, also for the, the Analanda, and then also cardiovascular. We're still on burn back. Anyone wants to burn, they call the city hall or call me. I would talk to a gentleman about the fire hydrant. I'm gonna have to have those fire hydrants painted, so that way I know which one they're not. If we have a house fire, we're gonna go and hook up those hydrant, and we're gonna break the lines. So, we need them.
Marked.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask him. How, how are you supposed to know which ones are just for flushing and which ones are actually fire hydrants? Well, they, they, they're saying so many things, are they actually gonna do all that stuff?
That, I don't know, just painting, but the regular, one of the regular. They work, because people have called me because they want to turn it, and that's good, with the hydrant. But for some reason, we can't use that, that hydrant there, they burn. I don't know what's the matter, you know? I would, I would like to have a flush.
Instead of an older, yeah, I know, I know, I don't know why they're, I, I would figure it would also be cheaper, but to do flush line instead of doing the whole fire hydrant.
Well, but they're doing hydrants because hydrants are for insurance purposes, they, they.
But you can't use them. Only the flushers.
But, see, what, what, what the engineer was saying is that if they do that, they're getting the city ready. If the city's gonna install, they're gonna install six-inch lines. They're, the hydrants are already set up there, and they, they do cost a lot of money. So, I mean, he was saying it's better to do it now than later, especially now that the government gave the city some good grant money, loan money and grant money for that.
Well, that's, that's the way about to do, we need to have both painted different color or something that we know.
Can I get that thing?
They're two-inch, you know? We'll, we could do some, but I mean, it's just a process, two-inch. We do that, I mean, the city, they've been helping out, helping with the, with the PA, you know, that the water's gonna be turned off, and it's been working pretty good. I know it's less, like you were saying, first we start with the total, then it's from over there, just that way. And then just the other part, now next time probably they're gonna be water in the leak. But it's working, and then, but people are getting water. I don't know, I just believe some people have questions on that one of meetings. Some people that don't, don't know me very well, I mean, I know everybody knows me, but come September 23rd, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have 45 years in the fire department. So, I had my, at that time, the city of Carrizo was together with the county, with one fire department. And with that building that was next to the city hall, just one truck still sitting there over there. Anyway, I want you to know that that's what, I am a certified department. I have my license, my certification, all that. And I believe some people want to know about our, our other account that we have. We do have another account, which we keep it separate, for reasons that we do our own deals with that for our department. Right now, I know last time we had some people that wanted to rent it, it's cold. So, we got some heaters in it now. We got a stove they're gonna put on there. We got a tank donated for propane, so we're gonna have a stove. And like when somebody has a benefit or something like that there. And on this account, I'll let my head take over, and you know.
Okay, on this account, we have it separate, you know, we have it separate because the people that helped us with the fundraisers wanted us to have a separate account. Because when we go out to fires, we don't have time to look for you, for her, for, to get water, to get what we need. We, a year ago, two years ago, we were out on Briscoe. We were there a whole day. What they gave us to eat was nutritional bars and gyrate and water. That's what they gave us to eat, all day long, from six o'clock in the morning to whatever time we got it controlled and we were there all day.
There, you were helping out Carmona, or?
We were helping out Carmona, we were doing nutrient for Carmona.
Did he reimburse you his gas?
He always does, he always gives us diesel for our trucks, we never have problems with that.
No, we, we, we're trying, I mean, now we're trying to have no problem, yeah. We've been trying to work something else.
Okay.
But we started, everything just, uh, X can't check on.
No, because I, I know that, the, that's what I like about your fire department, that you have, you have, you have your crew, your reliable crew that's always ready to, when, when needed, right now, whenever they're ready to go.
And we're there to help each other too, you know, we're there to help each other, you know? It's not, we're not taking money, we're not scheming money, you know, everybody can go in there and check what we're doing with that money. You know, cause there's things being done with that money. There's repairs being done to our fire trucks, and we have had Deepwell, they did the repairs for free. Cause they, we, we couldn't, we, if, if, we can't afford somebody to check the trucks with the computer. So, we decided to ask Deepwell, Deepwell did everything for free. No más lo que, the, whatever we needed to buy, so it can be replaced, it can be fixed.
Like there, we bought tacos for them.
But then we gave them tacos, they didn't charge us, but it came, it came from us to give them, you know.
You would weigh sheep for tacos and making all that?
You know, like I heard, he's not here to defend himself. But he's been talking.
By eating cake.
He's been talking behind our backs, trying to put all these people against us. You know, he, he told the fire department from Carrizo some stuff too, that he thought that it wasn't gonna come to our ears. You know, and that's not, we, we're here, we're, we're representing him, we represent you guys. You know, why am I gonna, why are we gonna get something and steal something that doesn't belong to us?
I appreciate everything that y'all do, I'm very grateful for what y'all do, it's very good to have a fire department.
Because by the time they done 911 in Carrizo town, these guys are already there.
We're already there.
Yeah, they're already there.
The weather, bringing it back.
We went for Carrizo, and nos quema la casa.
Yes. And, and that money is, they told us that it was there for that reason, so we can get waters, we can get food. You know, see, yes, we did have a Christmas party, but we put money in that Christmas party. We put the food, Carrizo has a budget. Carrizo gives their fire department a budget, 20 to 25,000 a year. Carrizo does fundraisers, yes they do, to make the dance. They make a Christmas party, they, they recognize them, yes they do. You know, and we did have a lunch to appreciate our, our husbands, our, our co, our families, you know, because we're, we're a family. You know, and we appreciate that our husbands let us be out there, their wives let them be out there. You know, it's a little appreciation. It's not, we're not having party with the money that we're getting, we're fundraising. You know, if, you know, it's, it's, they're talking without thinking.
But it's probably people that doesn't donate nothing, those are the one that talk more than ones that don't help.
You know, it, it did, it did got me mad because he's recording, and it's coming out on YouTube. When I'm out there asking for a donation, that name, my face, came out. You know, so it did got me mad. Because I'm the one out there asking, Mr. Eagle, can I have a donation? Mr. Eagle's gonna say, no, mira, aquí salíte en Facebook, aquí salíte en YouTube, that you're taking money? The mayor did say, yes I did say it. You know?
As far as you know, has there any been any checks or any money come to the city?
That we don't know that's been coming from that, because he's stating that we're getting donations from the oil field companies. We're not getting any donations from the oil, not unless you guys are receiving it here.
The ones that you turned in, that was all.
And that's, and that was a bill, they did, because they use our foam. They use gallons and gallons of our foam, and that foam needed to be replaced because that is for our protection, for our, to protect our houses.
Our city.
Our city. So, that's why it was, it was replaced, it wasn't a donation. So, that's why it was, it was replaced. It wasn't a donation.
So, sometimes at night, we're out there, ten o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, you know, and there's a store open, not sure people that stop, but they're ready to go there, on the loose or whatever.
We're out there without eating, you know.
And then that's it. So, that's what, that's what our funds are for.
And it's being used to do repairs, it's being used to buy things that we need there. We use it to buy shares.
And I will tell you, I think this is one of the council that we have.
We use it, you know, we've been using it wisely. We don't use it just, you know, those, the heaters, they're being used because it's getting rented and it's cold. It's even cold for us when we're having a meeting.
We have a, on Thursday, we, we get a meeting. So, anybody who wants to go, they're welcome. For your children, ninos, we actually have a box that will give little, little things for kids.
What day?
Thursday.
Thursdays.
Yeah.
What time?
Every Thursday or on seven?
We're there, we're trying to be there every Thursday.
Yeah. One Thursday, we don't, so, but we try to work, it'll feel better, you know, and we have meat out. This land is two last Thursday, we're down on me because most of us are working. And I couldn't be here out of San Antonio. But hoping everything will turn out better.
No, como quiera, we're here, we're here. We still, you know, together, you know. And, you know, whatever we can do, we will do it.
No, I'm very, I'm very grateful for what you do. Also, I like the fact that you're very organized, like when he's in San Antonio, he already has somebody else covering for him or vice versa, and you're, you're always, you're always ready.
Ojita, what's holding me back is I don't have a vehicle, but, you know, I'm still able to.
I'm wasted.
Also, this is the fire department. This is your department. Si un día, by any chance, we got cable.
I can bet for them, because every time I call you, you're there. I know for a fact. I mean, you don't tell me no, or how much are you gonna pay me or anything?
I just got one question. I just wanna make it clear. Is it true what Vito said about the Christmas bonus? I'm gonna tell you exact amount, two fifty, and then it went down. Two fifty, two hundred, and each fire, man, fire woman, hundred bucks. Is it true or no?
Yes.
Okay?
That was about the only thing that was true. I think that was the only thing.
But it's not a bonus.
Not with that Christmas bonus.
What else? That's what Vito said, that's a Christmas bonus. Why expect it to be a bonus?
It's a booster, it's a, it's on the.
Pero how come, porque the council, they don't let the citizens know about it? Nobody knew about it.
Okay.
Are they not required or?
This is one thing. That, that didn't, only a hundred dollars came out of the city, only. Toda más came out of our.
Our, our.
Our, our, our.
Your second account.
Our second account.
Fundraising.
Yes.
It didn't, it didn't come out of the two dollars.
It didn't come out of the two dollars you guys paid. It came out of our, what we fundraised.
Why do y'all use those two dollars from each year?
Those, those stay, aquí están en el, en el.
Pero what are they used for?
They're used for fixing las trocas if they have to.
Major things that need to be done.
We buy oil, filters, you know, filters, big filter here, it costs like a hundred dollars, you know that? So, big filters, that's why las trocas.
They pay their SOCOM, NAPA, their accounts payable, electric, well, not electricity rate?
We don't, we.
They're with us, right? Yeah, they're with, they're with the city. They don't pay water, but.
Ojita, we have total and key, better than ever. Ojita, we have over two thousand dollars.
So, see, their truck ever breaks down a major part or something?
That's why I'm into. Why don't you all report it each month, at least?
So, it comes out in our reports here. We could say it out loud if you like.
No, no, nobody's.
Well, usually, we, we always say the cemetery fund, the, we can start.
It's important. Nobody's trying to, I didn't have to.
See, see, and the thing that I don't understand about him is that he's saying that we're getting this fundraiser that we're getting from here, and then he's going over there and saying, telling them over there, oh, no. The fire department, le echas todo, maleta, quítate dinero al city, you know.
And it's all got to stop.
Yes.
No, but every time, every meeting, they report, listen to the value that they have right now.
They have two thousand, six hundred and nineteen, and seventy-nine.
And that, that doesn't cover a suit. That doesn't cover a suit.
A bunker suit.
A bunker suit. That doesn't cover a bunker suit.
They cost like thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, they cost over three thousand dollars, one whole bunker suit.
Does that have to be new?
Yes.
Let's tell you, which department, they don't, you know.
They can pass them down.
Pero if we go to a fire, we get burned, we get hurt or something, first thing, the company is gonna look at the material that we have.
Oh, yeah.
And if they're outdated, and they tell you, we got one coming up and it's gonna take next month. And they'll tell you, so it's hurricane. Ojita, we're doing good. We got this, we got the truck, but we still need some.
We still need more. We still need more, but that doesn't cover one.
Couple pounds.
We still need at least.
You need to get in a diet.
We still need at least three more bunker gears, complete bunker gears.
We're working on it.
But we're working on it, you know. Slowly but surely, you know, it's gonna get there, but we don't have no problems. Telling you guys what's going on, you guys know what's going on, you know. It's just, I don't know why, just what he said or what he's been telling, not only you, but I heard it by some other people. You know, and when I saw it on the YouTube video, and that he did acknowledge, he did say it, you know, that, you know, because I'm the one that's going to store by store and saying, if I go to his store and I tell him, sir, can you donate me this and that, what is he gonna tell me?
Before I end my, my report, I'd like to add the council, that I'd like to burn that lot. I saw that they already picked up all the tires, right there on the corner of Seventh and Sarabosa. You know, where the door piling and stuff. And I'd like to, they get snakes and everything else in there.
What is that by your, oh, you're by?
My left foot.
Okay.
Banderas, you got banderas?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, we're there, so we don't.
Honestly, you told me that. You're responsible for the firing.
And we don't get in trouble.
Just put Maria there on top of the truck.
So, that's all I have for, did I clip it up?
It's not, it has, it's not my first rodeo, Ms. Angie. I done it by myself, acres and acres.
Any more, any questions?
I can, oh, go ahead.
No, hit that burn button.
In a barrel, you said.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, now mine, while y'all were talking to the table about those, los monos del agua, que dijiste deje to be painted. When was the last time you told them that they had to be painted?
Well, I, I just found out that they're connecting with two-inch. Two-inch, I'm gonna paint it.
Yeah. But have you told them before if they can paint him or apenas?
No, apenas.
Okay, now write it down in the calendar, guys.
And, and there was keep track of that.
Keep track of that, and maybe on the next meeting, I will appreciate it if y'all say, we took care of this, we do what Mr. Rosa wanted. Now, because it's very, very important. It could be your house, his house, or her house, or my house. Y van a decir, no, con él me dijo nada. No, keep track of those things. Those are important things for us. Especial un biquito, una bijita que no se puede mover de la cama y se quema la forma nomás porque el city no puso cuidado de ir a pintar lo que tenía que pintar. I mean, please, I ask you, I beg you, do what he wants you all to do.
Yes, yes.
He's not asking you for money. He's asking to do it, just paint it. If not, give me the brush and the color and I'll paint him. Tell me and understand, street paint, you see? I mean, anything, you know?
So, if you still use that, not pressure, uh, the last one, when you connect to the fire.
We have.
You don't have to use the.
The pressure.
We have, we have a pressure and a suction. And they'll tell me how many pounds it has, you know, per inch. Now, if the, that little thing, you know, and I, and I need, I need, they need water. Now, for that thing.
This is the engineer will say, we'll do this, but until we finish everything, then we'll go back and we'll do all that stuff.
In un barro. You can burn, but it becomes a nuisance. Si le fastidia a la persona, entonces si le van a dar al Sheriff Department. Then the Sheriff Department will contact him or myself.
So, it'd be better to pay the five dollars?
No, but they.
No, but they need permission. A uno de mis hermanos, ¿sabes quién le puso el dedo? Aquel, ¿qué es tuyo? El que vive detrás de mí.
Chente, oh! Hasta mí me pone el dedo solo.
Ese hombre no tiene vida, no más sabiendo a ver qué.
But if you, if it becomes a nuisance to the, to the people, they will call the Sheriff Department and they just, if you're burning in a barrel, keep it low, you know.
No, I don't even, yo no quero.
Also, they give a minute, the sheriff department, on the sheriff, they have a point that si en caso estás quemando, que tienen la de Dios o guardador ahí, it's using for heat, tampoco no.
No, no.
Pero no en la casa, mira fuera, cuando te ponen ahí, a picar agua.
Por si el año que pasa, no este, el año que pasa, el año pasado, que venía mi hijo de Houston, pusieron leña ahí afuera y todo, tarny, y ese, tu hermano, o lo que sea tuyo. No, le habló al Sheriff Department, fue al Sheriff Department, called the police, this música, y cuando él tiene la música hasta las cinco de la mediana, who caused the car? No, hombre, no.
There's one more, one more thing.
Congratulations on that forty-five years.
Mr. Rosa, we, we enjoyed your report, very good. And we approve of your fire department's report, very Maria, excellent. Also, we want your wife to get better, and hopefully she'll be with us pretty soon out of hospital.
Well, thank you.
And our stipulation only would be that he gets his fire hydrants.
Yes.
I mean, hopefully.
Well, I gotta go pick her up. I have to.
Okay, take care. I'll be praying for her.
Gracias.
Second. Item number fourteen, discussion approval of accounts payable for the month of January two thousand and nineteen.
Mine, thank you.
Okay, make motion for the approval of accounts receivable for the month of January twenty.
That's a motion.
I second the motion.
Mr. Vosso, one to second. If there are any favors, say aye.
Aye. Item number fifteen, discussion approval of accounts payable for the month of January two thousand and nineteen. Yeah, I, right, like, right here, I see a lot of payments that we pay the USDA, the contractors. One for ninety-two thousand, one for twenty-six thousand, one for a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And that's because it was during the shutdown, the shutdown very clear. And they're saying they weren't getting paid.
Well, I mean, that was that one month, critical month, the, the payment. Yeah. We have the payment, but they were not at work, USDA. And as soon as they went back to work, that was one of the things that they said, make sure. So, they, they were, they were rich with the payment.
Make a motion.
I make a motion for the approval of accounts payable for the month of January twenty.
I second. Item number sixteen, discussion approval of reconciliation reports for the month of January two thousand and nineteen.
I motion for the approval of the reconciliation reports for the month of January twenty.
Second.
If there are any favors, say aye.
Item number seventeen, discussion approval of meeting minutes for December twelve, two thousand and eighteen, and January ninth, two thousand and nineteen. I make a motion to approve.
Yes, I second. Uh, if there are any favors, say aye.
Aye. Number eighteen, the city of Reddington reserves the right to adjourn to, to a simple session at any time to discuss any of the matters listed below as authorized by chapter five, one of the Texas governmental, subchapter D, as it pertains to personal matters. Item one zero seven four, subjective session matters. Eight, discussion action on hiring maintenance worker Daniel Espaso. Yeah, item number nineteen, return to open session. The board may take any action on item discussed. Eight, discussion action on hiring maintenance worker Daniel Espaso.
Okay. After meeting the executives, that session, we decided on hiring Daniel Espaso. As an employee, at thirty-four hours, with.
My second.
Mr. Rosa, second. If there are any favors, say aye.
Aye.
I have a complaint for y'all.
Uh, item number twenty, public comments?
No. Yo, yo, okay. Allá por el camino de abajo, yo no sé si ustedes pasan, pero I'm sure Samora pasa por ahí, por abajo. No sé, viene por abajo, mister Samora?
Fifty, fifty-seven.
Fifty, fifty-seven?
Oh, but I said Texas dot, because somebody threw a bunch of trash.
Yes.
Eso no es city, pero we gotta talk, you would have to talk to Texas dot. Pero though, I did, you reminded me, I wanted to, to come back, right here in the city park, in the, in the bridge. The trees are already practically touching your car. I think that's Texas dot's responsibility.
Who's car?
Well, when you're driving through there.
Oh, sí.
Well, you have a small car, but if you have like a taller car, it's practically.
En la, en la esquina, en la escuelita.
But you're going like, allá, coming towards Martinez, on the right side.
Oh, okay.
It's coming from that side, from the, from the mountain.
Pero alguien está tirando basura, tiraron sillas, y no sé qué tantas cosas hay.
It was a new ticket.
Have you all noticed that the bridge, the limit city park, when it crosses that little creek? Yeah, there goes space missing, some boards, we're over there, they will go.
Oh, really? Oh, man, the dangers.
The dangers, some, some pitos.
That's easy for our own employees to fix, huh?
Lleva como unos, okay, six by six, or algo así, no la rutas a cross.
Man, thanks for bringing it up.
And it's, that's all, and then, pero.
Thank you for bringing that up, that, that, that's a hazard for, for kids, for.
No, you have to go see, check it out.
Comments?
So just to be clear, for the next meeting, the city manager or who's going to give a, a report of, 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 what's been going on with the?
You have the only experience, at least one, or nothing means.
So you're gonna, from now on, whenever they do that, there must, because it's in daytime, right? It's like around ten in the morning? You're gonna let us know ahead of time and you're gonna schedule a, post a meeting so it won't be a forum?
Yeah.
So we can come and hear what they did and be up to date. Because right now, well, what happens most of the time is the mayor and someone attended and they don't really tell us anything.
One of those meetings here?
Yeah, it's here. It, it's, it's the, the guy from USDA, the main guy that releases the money. And then it's the, the engineer and the contractors that were here, working on the projects, is the bosses, the main bosses. They come and they do a presentation of what they did and.
And anybody can take?
I don't know, can they, can reverse it? Not, mostly they don't, it's just for.
The city, the city, they can search you.
But with the city, pues cualquier way, can't get a call there. We should be able.
No, no. I mean, to give the information.
There's not going to be any input, like, I want this done or whatever. Pero, pero you can listen, you can hear me.
Post that agenda and that, that will, that will provide.
It's like a ten in the morning, once a month.
Yes, but my question is still not being answered, this.
Who's going to give the report?
What I asked is going to be, yes. Of all those meetings, are y'all going to generate a report at the end of the month so that when we, y'all have the meeting, at least the people that come to the meetings, we get a copy of what was?
It's because in those meetings, there's no minutes written, right? But now, if we do it, we do a agenda, a forum, now there is going to be minutes for that meeting. Because if there is minutes, it'll be very easy for anybody to get information on what happened. But this is.
Not necessarily, you can do like a manager's.
Yeah. Something like that.
She just wants to say a summary. Twenty-nine valves were installed and right neighborhood area.
Yes.
There were so many leaks, but they were fixed by, you know, and.
Because that's what they do, they, they, they give a report, what happened all those months? So maybe you could summarize it and, and.
Well, even if they can give you a copy of it and just, and then generate just the basic thing from it. Make it, I think that should be part of the city manager's, my faith, to the city, to the city.
Or maybe even if you're allowed to record, they, they do record it, right? Or they don't?
No.
Maybe you're allowed to record it, I hope you make a better summary if you forget something. You could make a better summary when you're writing.
Well, everything is in the documents when they represent for payment, everything is there. Yeah, that's what I heard, that they, they present something to y'all before you sign the check. So maybe from that, so that we can know, you know, what they did, what they work on. And the percentage, they say there fifty percent of, of it is already completed, you know.
How much do they should have to go?
Yeah. Because the citizens are the ones that are actually paying for all of this. We, we don't know anything.
Yeah.
I mean, when he, earlier, so I have to step out, but the beginning report that you gave, I didn't hear anything that, of any of the concern? Nothing. I think it should be part of your report. That's just me saying.
Because Ian tells you, there's thirty-five valves and only twenty were done, we still have, you know, so many to do, pero, I mean, we know, but the public doesn't.
And we're the ones helping y'all pick on all this stuff, so I did.
We're the ones that buy the bills.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're the ones that are paying for all these projects.
Who's going to be responsible fixing that road up there, that sword, that last road? Right beside the sword plant?
The, the, if the contractor's necessary, they're, they're responsible to fix it.
It missed a bit.
If, if they dug, like, over here, that's what I was getting into, into it was the, was the inspector because over here by, for hospital list, by, over here in the corner, um, they, they tore up the road and then they put some big rocks. And then I told him, no car could go over that, and then they, they took it off and they put some caliche and it still looks very ugly because it's, you can't really put caliche on a blacktop road. Caliche is like a dirt road. And they still didn't do a real good job, but they're the one, they shirk their own work.
That last road, what are you talking about?
Yeah.
We don't have any finished, pero cuando acaba, somebody's going to have to be responsible getting this road.
We're going to have to make sure that when they finish, before we sign, we sign the last checks, but really you were supposed to do it on a monthly basis? Not, not, not.
But he said the final one, y'all going to do a walk around and make sure that everything was completed.
We gotta make sure and if it's not, it's not completed.
He said that every ten, five.
Five percent only? So even if we don't sign it, they don't even lose that much money, they already got paid most of the money?
Well, in millions of dollars, five percent I lost.
I don't think they will mess with the USDA.
Oh, yeah.
They have to.
Yeah, if USDA finds out that they're doing us wrong or, or something like that, they'll get in trouble.
What was your license? Ian didn't admit to doing one, making errors on the one project, but all the other ones, he said that he was fine. He didn't admit he had.
I want to continue giving a good eye on them, but as, as I don't specialize in this, I just see what's common sense. I don't specialize in their work, but it's, we just gotta make sure they're doing it right. We're, we're investing a lot of money, a lot of years to pay it off. Comments? I just gotta wait for Ms. Rosso because I don't have a second to turn to me.
Do you motion?
I can motion, but lose a second. Oh, okay.
After this project is completed and, you know, which so is we collecting monies from, you know, the water, the sewer and all this, from the, from the citizens. Are y'all going to ever really update or buy more equipment for the work so they can do more work? Like faster, more efficient? I saw that they, was it the city that cut the grass around the school?
Where, here?
Yeah, a total trend.
I think the school district brings their own guys to come cut it.
They do, but they haven't. I know that they haven't, that's why I'm asking if they did.
Well, I know they said that people was cutting around town, I don't know if.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I was on a computer today, so.
Maybe he passed by that area?
Yeah.
I don't really know where he cut, but probably he was cutting around town.
Because my daughter, my daughter lives there close by and I keep telling, I always told his mother, and that school looks bad and outside, isn't it the city property for, of the outside? Or the city, right? So I had mentioned that comment, so that's why I'm wondering if who, who cut it. Because they're real low on the groundskeepers at the school district and I know right now we're sharing with two schools. So that's why I was asking who cut it actually outside. Because when they come, they do it outside and inside, do it all in one day. This one wasn't, it was only done on the outside.
That was probably us.
Mr. Rosamante, motions to adjourn the meeting, the, 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 the. Have any favors, say aye.
Aye.
What about, what about, what about, what about?